Welcome, everybody. It being 6:30. I'm going to call the meeting of the Manchester Planning Board, September 29th. Meeting to order. I'll take a roll call. I don't see Peter Morton. Chris Olney.
Yeah.
Gordon Brewster.
Yeah.
Sue Felberk.
Here.
Sarah Creighton's present. Ryan Fry.
Present.
Thank you. And Sandy Whitmer. The first order of business is an item to reconsider. The March 17th, 2025, approval not required for May. Application submitted by Elizabeth Kinder at One Spyrock Hill Road, map 14, Lot 32. Pursuant to the remand order of the land court dated September 24th, 2025, and Kinder et al. versus the Town of Manchester by the Sea Planning Board, December 25, 2025, this name is 000270. So we will consider the board's prior determination reflected in the decision dated April 10th, 2025, and the proposed A&R plan depicted in the subdivision due to inadequate access to proposed Lot A. The board's reconsideration being based upon certain plans, specifications, and certifications regarding a proposed C Street driveway entrance for the purpose for the proposed Lot A, which the owners have provided to the DPW and/or Building Department that did not provide to the board until June 18th, 2025. And those materials have been provided in hard copy in front of us. So with that, I will also say that this is an approval not required. We've heard a lot of comment on it in the past, and we will not be taking public comment. It's not required to take public comment on A&Rs, and we will not be taking public comment on this matter tonight. So I will invite Adam Nager for the applicant to share with us. Sandy has joined us. Sandy? Welcome. Adam, go ahead.
Thank you. We're very happy to be here tonight. I mean, we should have been with the board. We have a number of additional materials that are from the DPW or submitted to the DPW by the applicant for the board to consider, which we believe finally put to rest the question of whether this access is illusory. First item is a sightlines block plan dated March 13th, 2025. It was submitted to DPW to demonstrate that the driveway is required in the site distance from the applicable standards. 115 feet is required, 124 and a half feet or 124.4 feet are being provided. The second item is a site plan from July 22nd, 2024, which shows various details for the sewer connection to the proposed building in Lot A, including a new manhole and a tie-in to the existing manhole on C Street. And also shows the areas of approved earth removal and the retaining wall locations and locations of proposed steel planters in connection to a new French drain on C Street, which is substantially improving the site conditions. Prior to the project, the water sort of flowed from Summer Street down or across the area, and a new pipe has been installed that drains that across the proposed driveway location into a French drain, which I understand is functioning nicely. It's installed and is an improvement to the existing condition. The third item is a C Street geometrics plan. If the board will recall, as part of the original application, we submitted a surveyor certificate and a curb cut plan. And this geometrics plan was requested by the town administrator as part of their review of that curb cut plan to show the actual width of Summer Street, the intersection detail, 59.5 feet, in the cert to sort of validate the certificate of compliance that we had previously submitted to the DPW and to the board. The fourth item is a 90-degree turn plan that was provided to DPW in February. This was also requested by the town administrator at DPW as part of their review of that curb cut plan. It demonstrates that proposed new driveway entrance is going to have a 6% slope, and it can accommodate a 90-degree turn in and having a turning radius of 18 and 3/4 feet, which is meets the town criteria and is the exact same radius that was approved for the new curb cut on Spyrock Hill Road, providing the entrance to Lot 8B. Item five is a sewer tie-in plan. It was requested in October of 2024 and shows the property's finer sewer tie-in details at the base of the proposed driveway. Item six. Item six is an as-built retaining wall plan that shows the engineering detailing the construction of the retaining wall system along C Street. If the board will recall, there were some public concerns raised as that wall was being created about structural stability. So this was the plan that was immediately submitted by the owner to the Building Department to demonstrate that they followed all the proper engineering practices. And as the board knows, as part of the agreements that was reached in this case, the owners of Lot A are going to be required to make annual inspections of that retaining wall, provide certifications to the town, and make any necessary repairs at their expense. Item seven is a certificate of compliance from Onion Flats Architecture. This is recent. It was just dated September 23rd this week. This is a certificate of substantial completion for the project's retaining wall that was required by the settlement agreement. It was submitted to DPW on Monday, actually Tuesday, September 23rd. And the final item is just the post-settlement correspondence between Chuck Dan and DPW and Timothy McDonald, culminating with DPW's response at the end of last week confirming they're prepared to issue a driveway permit in accordance with the settlement agreement. We think that all these plans really put to rest any questions of legality of the proposed driveway. We give a win-win for the town and the applicants. There's a number of conditions that are imposed that obviously are beyond what the regulations could require, so I think that the team is agreed to. But we think this is really helpful to the town and the applicants, and we're happy to report this matter. Thank you.
We also have in our packet the original A&R application and site plan. So I think it's important to understand that the board decided in the context of ongoing litigation to agree to reconsider its prior decision in light of materials that we did not have when we issued the April 10th, 2025 decision, or at least those of us who were here that day, and materials that the board did not have before the April 10th, 25 meeting. Those have been included here for us in one place. The purpose of this meeting tonight is to review those materials, accelerate in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, and decide whether an approval-not-required endorsement is appropriate in light of those materials. So just to remind the board, we have two new board members. So I'm going to ask Roger Smerge from KP Law just to remind those of us who are not new and the two new board members, the criteria by which an A&R should be endorsed.
So if an A&R does not depict a subdivision, that is, if it depicts lots that have, for example, sufficient frontage on either a public way or certain private ways that are maintained for public use, so long as there is actual access on those ways from each of the lots, then a subdivision is not depicted, an A&R endorsement may be given.
Any questions from the board?
Sure. One quick note.
Yeah.
Roger just pointed out that the... I think there was a printing error. The 90-degree turn plan is not in here. There's just a repeat of the site plan, but I'll forward that. The board already has 90-degree turn plan. I'll forward it to Mark.
Any questions from the board for the applicant?
Does he intend for us to review this and comment tonight?
We're going to vote on it.
Maybe.
I think that... Let me get Ask Mark for a recommendation.
Recommend that you endorse the plan. Lots have frontage and access across the frontage.
I think most, Gordon, of most of the documents really are the documents that have been reviewed by the...
I've seen it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Ask one question about...
Yeah.
Which documents are new tonight?
There's essentially nothing new. All of these...
This is all...
All of these documents that are here, other than... Well, there's two. The email correspondence with DPW from the last week, that is new.
That's on there.
And then there is a certificate that was actually required by our settlement agreement. It's in section 2I, I believe. 2I requires that Onion Flats Architecture, as Architect of Record for the project, provide a stamp certificate confirming that the retaining wall on C Street was constructed substantially in accordance with the as-built drawings for the same. So that's what that is. And then all of the other plans are simply just the exact same plans that are referenced in Exhibit A to the settlement agreement.
Okay.
Except for the 90-degree plan.
90-degree plan is number five in the...
Right. But we don't have that tonight. Roger, are we comfortable?
It is a plan that...
Has been reviewed by the board.
Had been provided to the DPW and was through council provided to the board. I've got it up. I'm happy to walk it around.
Okay. I think we're comfortable with it as long as you're comfortable.
If this is the plan, I think it's in the packet.
Oh, was it? They might have been...
It just was mislabeled.
Okay.
It was out of order.
Okay.
If that's the plan, yes, absolutely.
Geometric plan.
No, that's...
That's not it?
No. The 90-degree plan is the one that actually has the shadow of a vehicle coming down the access way and turning onto C Street.
All right. Just to close it up, is it possible to see that drawing?
Sure. Why don't you just... I think...
Would you like to forward it to...
Yeah. That'd be great. And just for the record, Peter Morton has joined the meeting. Hi, Peter.
Hi, everybody. Sorry I can't be there.
And Peter, Mark forwarded you a PDF of what we're reviewing.
Yes, I have it. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Wonders in modern technology. When it works.
Madam Chair, just send it to you.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Madam Chair.
Okay. While we're waiting for that to come in, other questions from the board?
I actually have a question.
Go ahead.
It would be very helpful, Adam, if you could summarize in a very simple... This is a lot of material. And if you could summarize what exactly has changed since the original decision, other than the stamp...
I think it was...
The sort of engineering guarantee, it looks like.
I mean, it might be inappropriate for me to say anything. The remand hearing was limited to additional DPW materials, so I think the scope of this review is limited to the actual material itself. And I... It's... I think that this material, I guess the way I would put it, was not in your meeting packet back in April, and it's now in the meeting packet now.
Uh-huh.
For a more complete record, that just demonstrates the level of engineering work that was done between the applicant and DPW that was provided to the board sort of through council. And now that we're sort of at the finish line, you've got the email correspondence from DPW confirming that they're prepared to issue the permit. Now, that information obviously wasn't for you.
Mark, can you just move the image on the screen? Drag it, please. Thank you. Get everybody's faces in the middle of the image. So this is the 90-degree street entrance. Okay? Any questions on that? Yeah? Okay. I'm hearing no other discussion. I will ask for a motion for... Down. Do you have the plan?
Sarah, while you're doing that, I just... It's not a question, but just a statement before we take our vote that, just to be clear, the documents that we just reviewed, the planning board did not review when we issued our original decision.
Correct.
So even though some of these have existed before tonight, we did not have access to them when we made our original decision.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. Okay. I have one other question, and that is the plan dated March 17th, 2025, which we are about to vote on. You created an A&R to amend that where you carved off a small corner. And it's my understanding that you did not record that plan. You've not recorded that. So this was...
We recorded this one, and then we recorded the other one separately.
Okay.
This one will be recorded separately. It'll probably likely be recorded together.
Although the other one references one full parcel.
Right. Okay.
That's okay. That's... Okay. Okay. So I am going to ask for a motion for an endorsement by the planning board that this is not for a determination that this is not a subdivision. To determine that this is not a subdivision, therefore is entitled to endorsement as an approval-not-required of the plan of land located in Manchester, Massachusetts, with the recorded owners Elizabeth B. Kinder and Timothy McDonald, county land surveyors dated 3/17/2025, and 1 inch equals 40 feet.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Anything else I need to do, Roger?
To ask if there's any further deliberation.
Okay. Any deliberation? I'll take a roll call vote on this one. Sandy, by returner, yes. Brian Fry?
Yes.
Sue Felberk?
Yes.
Gordon Brewster?
Yes.
Chris Olney?
Yes.
Peter Morton?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Okay. Thank you for your preparation tonight, Adam. And Roger, thanks for your help on this matter.
Can we get the bylaws, right?
I can get the bylaws.
You need it.
I can get them. I can get them.
Wait. Is blue okay?
I don't know. It's alright.
It's such a...
Okay. I'll...
I want to...
He'll come back later. He has a Sharpie, I'll find it. I have a blue Sharpie or... Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have a good night.
Okay. Thank you. So, welcome. Kathy back. Kathy McCabe is with PD and Associates, I think. And she has been helping us think through the issues around our downtown bylaw, downtown district bylaw. And I think everybody knows that we, calling our recommendation at the last meeting, the select board agreed to postpone putting this issue on a November ballot and look forward to having it on the spring ballot. Mark and I went to the board meeting, and we stressed the importance of seeing it as a priority, that we felt that it was a strong priority and an important priority. So they agreed and understood. So with that, I asked Kathy and Mark... Now, Mark has proposed another draft, but before we do that, we wanted to talk through a few things. I'm going to take out of order a little bit because it references material in the document in our packet. The first is how to handle existing residential uses. And I pulled, in your packet, we can come back to it, the list of properties in this district. I don't know if people had a chance to look at it, and how the assessors characterize them. And there are several single residential homes along Beach Street, and there are two in the district from the tracks to the town hall and Elm Street. There are a number of mixed-use residential or predominantly residential or predominantly commercial, but only two from the tracks to here that are single-family, according to the assessor's records, which is the best we have to go on. And I thought that was a good tieback to what we had been talking about. We can get more into that. I just wanted to tie that list. That was in your packet. But first, let's maybe talk about the issue of sub-districts. Does that seem like a good place to start, Kathy? Or, you know, you've had a little time to coddle her on this. You talked to Mark, so I'm going to let you lead the discussion for that.
Well, Mark's been doing most of the drafting, and I've been giving him feedback. And so I think Mark's with... There was a walking meeting that looked at much of the district and really identified perhaps two sub-districts. And I think one of the things that, in terms of looking at downtown zoning, we're talking about districts, not an overlay, because you have an existing overlay, both in terms of your flood as well as the MBTA Communities Act overlay. And you want your core underlying zoning to advocate, articulate your goals and aspirations for what downtown should be. In terms of having sub-districts, you have having a core downtown area and having a little finer grain where you have perhaps some area where you focus 100% commercial. And the two sites that were... That's downtown District B, which would be Crosby's and Harbor Point area. And then downtown District A would allow for mixed use, which would include some residential, up to four units, as is presently drafted. Sub-districts are stretched, as often used in zoning, so you could have a little finer grain on one or two points, but it's the overall character is probably very similar in both sub-districts. They're kind of like two books on the bookshelf. They might be... Or two different shelves on the bookshelf. They might be slightly different height, but they're both part of the same focus as part of your downtown. And it's not unusual for a downtown area to have sub-districts. And zoning, I think one of the examples that I had mentioned when I was here in the summer was Winchester has a very healthy downtown, and they have sub-districts within their downtown that have different use and dimensional requirements as to the sub-district. Mark, you mind adding anything?
No.
In our case, would you advise that the character of the Harbor Point and Crosby's area is sufficiently different, that it warrants having sub-districts? There's that...
Well, Crosby's is certainly different because, one, you're allowing parking in front of the building as a grocery store. So it's kind of in a class of its own. But also Harbor Point is significantly different because it is really almost a larger-scale commercial development, whereas most of your other buildings and parcel are... It might be multi-tenanted and multi-commercial fronts, but it's a smaller scale, and they're more historic. There's some exceptions to that, but Harbor Point is a much larger-scale development. So since Crosby's is also a larger-scale commercial footprint, it makes sense to have the two go together, even though they're on different sides of the tracks.
Yeah. I guess at the last meeting, there was some concern about having such large parcels be available for residential in the downtown in that adding a lot of residential units would create a different type of congestion than what... So maintaining the commercial uses in this area or for those, they're both the two biggest parcels in the downtown area. So to treat them slightly differently, you know, is not unusual.
It's with the proposed map.
And how you treat parking in both is different.
We currently have a couple other areas where the parking is currently in front, in front of the establishment. Sometimes that's along the road, and other times, like the Cape Am Savings Bank area, it's not along the frontage of the road, but it's in front of the buildings. And how would we envision... I mean, that's a separate... Help me understand if that's the criteria.
Well, parking's always a challenge in a downtown. But I think generally speaking, you want your commercial establishments to face the street, and that even if property's on a corner, you want active uses on the ground floor, and you want larger-scale windows in commercial buildings. So, you know, people can, you know, do the old-fashioned window shopping, but that allows for vibrancy within the downtown. So that said, you know, most, many downtown town centers prohibit parking between the street and the commercial storefront. And you have it in a few places. It's more on parcels which back up into the railroad tracks that serve... So the railroad was their front door, and the back part was Summer Street, so to speak. So, I mean, some of that is an accident of history. So, but in terms of one way of dealing with the design of parking is to have, like the Cape Am Bank, you have a commercial use facing the front on Beach Street. The access is on the side, and the parking is on the side. So that's not an unusual strategy to kind of maintain the street wall, but then have you try and minimize your driveways, and that way parking is on the side as compared to the front, because not all parcels enable spaces to be in the rear. Sometimes there's not enough room in the rear. There's, you know, access issues. Yeah. So, I mean, having in a historic downtown, you know, parking, sometimes you've got to be flexible. And I think some of the earlier drafts indicate that you're trying to be flexible on commercial parking. You also have a strong enforcement program of parking so that Manchester police do enforce turnover on street parking, which is really important, because in many business districts, employees and owners, store owners park, and that's a very expensive parking space because they're really precluding sales from themselves and their neighbors. And I think some of the earlier drafts indicate that you're trying to be flexible on commercial parking. You also have a strong enforcement program, um, of parking so that Manchester Police do enforce, um, turnover on, on street parking, which is really important because in many business districts, employees and owners, store owners park, and that's a very expensive parking space because they're really precluding sales from themselves and their neighbors. Um, so enforcement becomes important.
Okay. And the draft that you've proposed, Mark, just to, the proposal of having two sub-districts. The difference is that in the District B, the Harbor Point and Crosby's District in its current form today, would not allow single-family, two-family, basically any residential.
Any residential.
As any residential.
Because right now there's no residential on either property and, um, so with the concern about resi, large-scale residential development and trying to maintain, uh, you have some successful business there, maintain the commercial use of the property, um, that, that's why I've created that sub-district without residential use.
And how about mixed use? Where's that?
That's, it's allowed in downtown District, in downtown District.
So.
Can I review this just for, so in, in downtown District A, we're allowing mixed use by right and single-family and two-family houses by special permit. And in residential, in the downtown District B, no residential at all. That sort of summarizes it.
I think the current proposal is no residential.
No residential.
No single-family residential, no two-family residential. Other conversions of one to two-family, into a two-family would be planning board approval, uh, draft, um, special permit. Conversion of an existing dwelling into a three-family dwelling would be a special permit, multi-family dwelling. No. But there would be, mixed use would be allowed in A. If mixed use without first-floor residential would be allowed by right and mixed use with first-floor residential would be a planning board, uh, special permit in downtown A. That's the blue up there. And in downtown B, mixed use is not allowed.
So our fear about allowing mixed use in the downtown B district would be that perhaps a lot of the units could be created, but we haven't figured out how many there are.
I think that, from my perspective, if we start with our regu, our original intent, which is to protect, to ref, have this bylaw reflect pretty much what's there today. That's the case, right? So we have, um, pretty much residential, uh, um, we have no residential units in the Crosby's Harbor Point. Is that a correction on that, John? Or is it just a, I'm not gonna take comments right now on this general?
I will pull my time.
Okay. We will, uh, please. Um, uh, thank you. We'll, we'll get to you, okay?
Well, maybe I can speak for John's behalf. I think his argument would be, but to support the commercial uses in the downtown.
Need people.
Need more people living there. And so if we're cutting off this big piece of property from mixed uses, we're saying no one can live there, which seems kind of counterproductive to what we're trying to do.
May I add one quick comment? The goal of zoning is not to preserve what you have.
No, I understand.
But to encourage what you want in the future.
So, uh, all I'm saying is that the goal of this effort was originally to, to codify what we have today, um, because we want to particularly, uh, in the future have commercial on the first floor in our corridor. That's the, that was the original, whether that's the aspirational goal and whether we want to change our original intent to a more aspirational one, but I, so there, there are two different things. An aspirational goal that we may or may not all agree on, but certainly we started this effort saying, let's just, uh, let's start by ensuring that we, not ensuring, using zoning to, uh, ensure, because there seems, it's our sense that there seems to be, uh, a lot of, um, support for that piece of the goal. So, um, go ahead, Sandy.
Just to expand on that, um, in my view, the original intent of our effort was to prevent all of the commercial area of downtown turning into residential and being left without any commercial space that's available for commercial. And so the focus of this effort is how do we best maintain the commercial space that's there and maintain access to for future commercial enterprises in our downtown area. Housing was not our original focus. The focus was on, uh, access to commercial space. Uh, that's my view.
Yeah. So then we can think about whether we want to change that.
Change that.
Yeah. So, go ahead, Sandy.
Yeah. Uh, the, I, I think that's accurate. I think there is a, a missing little slice, though, from the forum, which was, there was a notion about the downtown being, the word that was used repeatedly was vibrant. And if you have potential for storefronts from zoning, but you don't have any people going to the storefronts, it's somewhat problematic. So the question is, while there isn't an explicit, maybe housing goal per se, part of make, helping to make the downtown vibrant is going to be allowing perhaps for greater density of housing. So, for example, in the table of uses, um, on number three, conversion of, I think it's supposed to be an existing, uh, single-family dwelling into two and the same thing converting the next one to three. I was surprised we didn't just say yes, because it's there, the building is there, it's existing, it's not changing its footprint. So it allows for greater density of housing without really any significant change in the appearance of the downtown. So there's things like that that I think are, the vibrancy thing is important to hold in there because if businesses, if there's no business to be made, even though a commercial space is permitted, people, you know, it's gonna remain in.
Well, we certainly recognize that this is not an economic development.
Right. No, I know.
This is, this is, you look like you were gonna say something.
Well, I think Su, Su's, Sandy's point are well-taken because the focus was to create, retain and support commercial activity as well as to add vibrancy, which was really an important, um, outcome of the downtown vision. We also were doing the downtown vision to kind of have a short, some short-term goals so that you could do larger-scale planning, um, but still be responsive to, to the market and what's going on. So I think one of the dilemmas of today is that the housing market and the demand for housing is very strong and it's outstripping the demand for retail and commercial services everywhere, uh, not just downtown, not just Manchester, but, you know, throughout the Commonwealth in New England and the East Coast and elsewhere. So market forces are saying, well, I'm having a hard time renting, you know, space. Developers, owners want to gravitate to the easiest leasable use, which right now is housing. But you also want to have that, as the person said, zoning is to say what you want to have. So what, having some changes that allow mixed use, which you've cited as a value in your earlier plan, but you don't have in your zoning, but still retain a focus on commercial is by having the, allowing residential in commercial buildings, but making sure the ground floor that faces the street is commercial. That doesn't preclude that the other portions of the building can't be commercial, it's just giving an option with mixed use. And having housing downtown often contributes to vibrancy, but you're not wanting to have it exclusive to the exclusion of commercial in your core area. That's why you're doing a downtown district and not changing the general district. And it's also why there's two, two sub-districts. Um, but I would also mention that on residential, there were, there's different types of residential. And right now we have a new, relatively new state law that any zoning district that allows single-family residential by right automatically allows ADUs on any parcel in the district, not just where a single-family house is, any parcel in the district. So it is worthy of consideration to pre, unless you want ADUs as a secondary use, um, potentially not in any parcel, perhaps precluded in the downtown, the core downtown area. If, um, someone might come in and ask for a variance of that, um, you can choose, you know, or as part of a mixed-use development, that's something for you to consider. But having it automatic, you know, sometimes that vacant space on a lot or that rear use can be space for a startup or it can be space for parking that you might want to protect. You also have to balance the need for having density in your downtown, I know, or intensity of space, so there's enough, uh, enough concentration of uses with climate change and resiliency and the need for permeable, permeability. So that, it's a balance, you know, there's multiple goals that we have to balance. Um, so I think this draft tries to balance many of them, but it also has to be Manchester's vision for the future, um, not a planning consultant's vision for the future. It's gotta be yours. So you, you know what's acceptable, um, in your community and where you want to go in the future.
One, um, thought that I have as we're talking, that this is important, which sort of, is that the Harbor Point is currently Zone A, so residential is currently allowed even though it's not present in, on those, on, um, Crosby's is Zone, is the general district and Harbor Point is district. So, um, one, uh, my concern about Harbor Point with the residential is that it's a very lovely place to, uh, and I think this is why we need to do this zoning change, but it's a very lovely place to potentially put a bunch of very high-end condos, um, you know, uh, if, if they didn't have, if we didn't have, you know, and, and maybe that's not a bad thing. We can't, you can't, um, tail is hard to dictate in, in zoning, um, but we would be changing, and we would be changing lot size from 22,000 to 6,000 with this change. Um, so that's an important, um, just piece of this. But as I listen to the comments, one way to potentially think about this would be to say, on the mixed use without first-floor residential, uh, we may want to reword that, um, uh, mixed use without first-floor residential could be a special permit and mixed use with first-floor residential could be prohibited in that District B. So that it, uh, I want to, nothing's insured, but.
It gives, it gives some flexibility both for the owner and the community.
Right. And I think that we have heard that the market, the other piece we have heard is that the market, it's hard to, mixed use is hard to, uh, the pro forma for a mixed use can be difficult and even for commercial in Manchester, but we seem to have, then we also heard last week, somebody, no, it was at the, at the select board meeting, actually, um, there was a comment that Manchester has a great deal of commercial use for, uh, town our size. You know, he made the case that we have two barber shops and two banks and a number of restaurants and, you know, everybody's got it. So, um, other comments from the board on the, uh, I think, let me, uh, just one other question, Mark, just to clarify your proposed, um, differences between downtown A and downtown B were the, that in downtown B you could have a, uh, athletic club or something.
Yeah, there was a, there were a few minor differences between the two as I kind of went through, um.
Let's go through them just from the top, just as a, a proposed downtown. Wait a minute, let's just back up for a second. Do people, how do people feel about having some distinction between those two areas of downtown? Does that seem like a generally good idea?
I think it's appropriate to do it during the uses currently.
I would agree.
Yeah, I think when park, when we start talking about parking and, does anybody object to, at least conceptually, Chris is thinking?
Well, I think it's academic. I don't think it's gonna make any difference whichever way you go, because neither of those properties is likely to be turned into residential development anyway. But it is possible to be, that probably would never happen across, well, I guess you never know. But if Crosby's were to turn into a store on the first floor and the residential above it, I don't think that'd be a bad.
But the, but the question is not, that's the use table. The question is, are those Crosby's and Harbor Point potentially different enough that we should have a subdist, do we should have them in sub-district?
Well, I think you make a case for either way.
Okay.
I, I'd like to define that a little bit more and what we think, what, what we think differentiates them specifically, like what, uh, what are the main points here that we can define so that we can, we can determine that?
Well, I would say parcel size and age of buildings. Um, they're typically very new, much newer. Amount of land devoted to parking.
It's the two largest commercial uses that we have in town. That's currently shown.
But I, I'm, I'm. I'm not sure that's 100%. When you go to Elm Street, there may be some.
Oh, that's true.
And also the, I'm not sure how, the KPM Bank parcel, I completely forgot.
This is, this is the, after, after my speeches, after my speech, my discussions with Chris from spring here, I look at the District B and I look at that large parking area past Allen's Pharmacy in the back there, like that. And if we, if we limited, so no residential, that would include condominium development of any sort at all, appropriately no residential development. And I would look at that as maybe an opportunity for some sort of limited residential development on purpose, managed residential development, increase, it seems like it might be an opportunity, but we are restricting it to say no right now. Just a thought. I agree with everything we talked about philosophically, everything we, we talked about since spring into now, 100% agree with. That little node of space back there, whether it can be developed or not, whether the MBTA will allow it, the land is available, I don't know.
Well, the, the land that is currently used by the MBTA for parking is deeded in the, it's deed restricted. Um, there's a covenant, I may not be using the right words, but there's a covenant between the owner, the prior owner, um, and the MBTA that requires, uh, that it remain parking and that a fixed number of spaces be allocated for day use for the MBTA. Now, that could change or whatever, but, and it is, um, presumably the place where people can park for the day, presumably going to the train, but always checking that. So, um, so the back part right now is deed restricted. So, um, so the back part right now is deed restricted. And, uh, from Allen, I'm not sure exactly where that line is, um, but, uh, I think that's the portion here. So your, your point is some portion of Harbor Point might be a well-suited for a residential space at some point.
Yes, may, maybe. We've talked so much about it needing the addition of additional housing in town. Perhaps that is the spot, if it can be done, it would be appropriate for it. This zoning would say no.
And it's District A right now?
Yes, three.
I think that was discussed during the MBTA process.
Yes, in fact, yeah. In fact, we, we strongly considered incorporating it because we thought it'd be a great place for residential development, but we thought it'd be a mixed-use development. And you can't do that under the MBTA zone, so.
But Sarah's original point, I'm fine with the two districts because I think the two areas are sufficiently different.
Okay, Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, hi, everybody. I just wanted to weigh in. And I, I just to follow up on what Sandy just said, I'm fine with it, them being separate districts. I think that's important, but I'm reluctant to restrict or even not allow the, the possibility of residential on either of them. I like the idea of, um, some type of restriction on the ground floor, but just for all the reasons people have cited about the importance of needing housing in town. I think it would be, um, I just don't think we should flatly not allow it in either of those two areas. So I, I think there are mechanisms we can use, namely the special permit in the case of those two districts as well.
I think if you zone it for housing, at some point you will get housing. So you need to think about that.
It's zone for housing now, Mark.
I, yes, for relatively low-density housing, single-family housing, what it's zoned for. And so you need to think long-term about what you want on that property. Want it to be housing, eventually ownerships will get consolidated to deal with. The MBTA will be reworked. Housing has become so valuable, you have to think about what you want it to be at the end of the day, you know, 10, 20 years from now. Because if you zone it that way, you're probably gonna get it. You know, people don't like, uh, where there's strip malls everywhere. Well, the reason why they were built is that's how a community is owned. So again.
Which is what we're, which is what having no residential there and only retail on the first floor is a strip mall.
In a way, it's.
Is exactly a strip mall.
Yes, but it's, it's right now, that strip mall with offices above serves the important community need. It's where your pharmacy is, your liquor store, your Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, these are the most, the pizza place, these are the most successful businesses in your downtown core. And the way it's designed would, would be approved through the design guidelines that we're referencing in this bylaw, which were created for the MBTA district. So that is, yes, it's somewhat strip mall-ish, but it, it is.
If we want mixed use, we should allow it to be mixed use.
We're gonna, um, I think we're debating, let's, um, yeah, let's see if we can.
Let us mark a question.
The question is whether we need to go through the table.
The first question is two districts.
Harbor Point is also your largest parcel in your downtown. And as the draft is, it would only allow four units of housing in a mixed use, which to be honest, is an underdevelopment of that parcel if you were gonna use housing. Um, and it, uh, and I appreciate what you're saying about the, um, more distant side of the, um, Harbor Point parcel having room for expansion where the MBTA lot is. And I have not read the MOA that exists between the MBTA and that. But I have done development with the MBTA and used MBTA parking lots to develop housing and mixed-use projects, which is a long process. But one of the things is it also, in my mind, that's somewhat of a unique parcel and you may want to use the existing draft, but then as part of your larger downtown master planning process, which is kind of like subsequent steps, it might be a year from now, really do a focus charrette on what are the options and work with the, uh, and yes, I know it's condominiums and there have to be some, and I know there's the MBTA agreement, but sometimes you can have vertical development, keep the MBTA parking spaces and do stuff above. They're willing to be creative, um, but having a separate focused design discussion on that, since it's your largest parcel, may be worth it. Then even to think about Springtown meeting, that really needs to be almost a separate process than trying to say, well, we could do this, we could do that, to be really clear on what you aspire to. So that the zoning envelope is big enough so it's, can be implemented. But four units would shortchange, change that parcel.
Well, the other piece is that four units would, if, if four units were built. Now, we have the whole problem with the condos and whether anything would actually ever happen, you know, but things, things. Four units actually would, would market-wise drive enormous units rather than a small-scale development if we were just to have four units per parcel. But it, it seems to me also that in some future state, if everything was consolidated there, that larger parcel could be divided and then you'd have 6,000, several 6,000 square foot.
That's why doing a separate visioning charrette does focus on that.
On Harbor Point into.
On Harbor Point parcel and maybe, maybe you added some adjacent parcels, but that almost is a separate discussion. You're operating without a really concrete vision. So to kind of, I could have a fine-tuned, um, zoning where you lack a vision is challenging.
I'm not sure we lack a vision on that.
Well, you lack a specific, I don't, I don't hear a consensus on the specific vision for that Harbor Point.
We know what it does, we don't want.
You know, we see potential, you know, we, we like having this active, there's, there's restaurants, there's liquor store, there's the drug store. I mean, they have a lot of key, uh, generators and attractors for, that contribute to the vibrancy of downtown Manchester.
Why not just simply take your sub-district B and, and allow residential, but only on the second or the upper floors and not on the first?
Let's walk through the table first and then I'm gonna take comments because I, I can see people wanting to, to get into the. So let's just understand what Mark has proposed and then we're gonna, and, and.
And why?
And why? So, um, two districts, A and B, B being Harbor Point and Crosby's. And the first is no single-family detached dwelling in either district. As I said, we have, I just looked, uh, the, um, five. Yeah, the, uh, single-family residential, according to the assessor, is five of them. 18 Union, 37 Beach, 62 Beach, 64 Beach, and 66. So those are the single-family residential units in the district today. That doesn't mean they'd have to convert. It means, um, just as background.
Would you need to do something legally to grandfather them in so they're not, not non-conformal?
Okay, so let's just walk through the, what Mark has proposed here in front of us. Two-family dwelling would not, also not be allowed. That means you tear something down and you build up a two. In either. Uh, conversion of a one-family into a two-family in District A would be special permit by the planning board and, uh, District D would not be, B would not be allowed. It's just kind of irrelevant since right now there are no two families, one families in that district.
I'd like to ask for clarification on that. My belief is that, and I had an unexpected afternoon, so in the existing language, I believe that it's conversion of an existing one-family dwelling. So there's not a notion of buildings as it is in, um, Item 4. And the reason for no in B, actually for both of those, is because there's nothing like, there's no, uh, one-family dwellings in that district. So it just makes it crystal clear.
Yeah, I think right now we can't word Smith. It, the current wording in the table is conversion of a one-family.
Oh, it's just one family, okay.
Into a two-family dwelling. So I think we're trying to use the existing use table, you know, whether it's existing. With a certain agreement, certainly agreement that wording could be improved in use table. Okay, um, conversion of an existing dwelling into a three-family dwelling with no increase in gross floor area would be planning board in District A, planning board, special permit, and in B is a no. Again, kind of a moot point in B because there isn't that. And then multifamily dwelling would not to more than four units with conditions described in Section 4 is a no and a no because we're trying to have multifamily with residential. We're not trying to have mixed use, not family, well, um, residential conservation cluster, a no. Sense. Um, community facilities, use of land or structures for religious purposes would be a yes in both. Use of land or structures for educational purposes is a yes in both. Mark, can you keep reading these? I'm gonna pull it up so people can see if they're not.
Uh, childcare center for school with children is a yes in both. Municipal uses, including parks, playgrounds, senior centers, offices, fire, et cetera, would be a yes in both. Charitable or philanthropic use, hospitals, nursing care, facility and sanatorium would be no in the downtown district. And it had been a special permit before in the downtown District A, but after thinking about it, I think it should, most of those are your small parcels along Beach Street and Central, it should be a no as well. It, it doesn't provide any vibrancy or benefit to, to like a commercial core area. Community private club is a planning board special permit in both districts.
What is, um, that is, is that that's the, I mean, going to, to, is currently planning board across all districts? And yes, allowed in the LCD, but my, uh, would that include a community center? Because that's of course, this downtown District B is where the Manchester Community Center was.
I mean, yeah, it is, uh, community club, you have to be a member to.
Well, everybody's a member.
You know, those, those could be permitted uses, even if it is a private club, you know, people coming and going, whether it's a private health club or, uh, even a yoga studio, would that fit in there? You know, so, uh, you know, that brings people and some vibrancy, uh, you know, to, um, to the area where, wherever it might be located. So, um, so, you know, that, that could be a yes and actually in both, both districts A and B. So cemeteries, uh, no in both. Public utility or public communication buildings, not including service station or outdoor storage of supplies is, uh, no in both districts. Agricultural uses, we get to non-use of agricultural, horticultural, floricultures permitted in both districts. Uh, greenhouse nurseries for horticulture, for culture purposes. Planning board special permit in both districts. I think that's probably because that's how it is currently in the general district. Actually, no, it's both.
It's no in the general district today.
No, it's.
Oh, yes, it's yes in the general district.
It's a yes in the general district. So, um, then the raising and keeping of livestock, including three horses or cows regulated by the Board of Health is a no in both. We get to commercial uses, businesses and professional offices, bank or financial is yes in both. Offices of doctors or other members of recognized profession is yes in both. Medical office building for not more than three doctors is yes in both. General retail uses is a yes in both. Personal or general service establishment is yes in both. Restaurants are yes in both. Indoor recreational club or facility is a planning board special permit in the A district, but yes in the E district. And, uh, that was because those buildings are larger and have larger spaces for indoor club. Not sure why that one, a special permit. Right now, actually in the general district, they are not permitted. So by allowing it in the downtown by special permit, you're actually loosening up that regulation. Printing and publishing is a yes in both. Yacht storage, construction and service and related uses is a no in both. Fish and shellfish landing, storage, handling, not fish processing is a planning board special permit in both. Wind energy conservation systems are no in both. Wind monitoring and meteorological towers is a, is a no in both. And wind energy is a no in both. Sorry, I think I might have said yes. Large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaics installation is a no in both. Public parking or garage of automobiles not incidental to another permitted use. There's a planning board special permit. Helicopter landing, storage is a no in both. Marijuana businesses and treatment is a no in both. Golf entertainment is a no in both. Laboratories, research, R and D and bike manufacturing and assembly is a no in both. So, uh, to accessory uses. So up to four borders and a single-family dwelling with common cooking and living facilities is a yes in the downtown district, but a downtown District A, uh, but not permitted because it's residential in B. Maintaining on any lot, not more than one commercial vehicle is a yes in District A, but a no in District B. Brashing or maintaining of more than four automobiles when accessory to a dwelling is a ZBA special permit, um, which is what it is across the board in all the other districts. And it's not permitted in the District B because there are no. And it's not permitted in the District B because there are no dwellings proposed in District B. Tennis courts or other, an accessory to a dwelling, again, is ZBA special permit in A, but not permitted in B, because it would be accessory to a dwelling.
That would seem to me to be, if we were going to allow it, it would, at all, it would make sense in the larger parcel.
Yeah, except that this says accessory to a dwelling-
Well, except if we're gonna have mixed use dwelling.
Well, then we can adjust that later, but the way this is currently crafted, there's no dwellings.
I don't know, it seems like-
So I mean, if you-
The premise of this downtown is not to have, like, tennis-
So if you wanted to do a tennis club in the back, let's say the MBTA disappeared and you wanted to put tennis back there, it would be under, probably permitted under the club character. Because remember, this is for like a, you have a house and you want to put it in your backyard.
Right, so why would we just not let, just say no on both of them?
I did.
No, it's a no on those.
Oh, for the downtown, because we do allow, yeah. I mean, there's no place to really put it.
Right, so that's-
Anywhere, so. Okay.
What do people think about that one? Seems like no makes sense.
I think it should be a no for A and B.
Then the next one is swimming pools. So, no in the A district either. An accessory to a dwelling only. ADUs-
Can I just get consensus from the board about if we should change tennis courts and swimming pools in this downtown District A and B? Or change in B, put them both at no?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, we, everybody's agreed on that? Peter, do you have any comments?
Yes, no, good.
We're changing those to no. It seems like a moot point, but let's, let's just-
It's not why we're doing this, to deal with room for swimming in tennis.
The next two items are, we're waiting for Attorney General to come back on our swimming proposals for ADUs in the spring, so six and seven would be, might be changed, so.
Well, it seems like seven got deleted in there.
Yeah, seven was supposed to be deleted in ADUs, was gonna be in there. The other thing that is in there is customary home occupations, conducting dwelling by a person residing on the premises. So yes in the A district, because it's in a dwelling, there are no dwellings in B, so it's a no. The next one is accessory uses or a structure on the same lot with an incidental to a permitted main use on the same premises, including Austria Park. Yes in both. Sure, what does that mean?
Well, it could be a storage shed or a-
Mm-hmm, okay. Then we get to family daycare, large, which is a CBA special permit currently in all districts. I left it as such. I'm not sure whether it's something you would want in the A district, but... Then family daycare home for small is yes in both districts. And adult social daycare, I put no in both districts.
Can I just clarify? Family daycare home is an accessory use, and small is defined by General Laws, Chapter 15D, Section 1A. So I don't know what that means. But it means that there is some, it's not just like a random number. There's, we can figure out what that, what that is, so.
But if it's in-
It's not a, but it's a home.
If it's in a home, and wouldn't we change it to no's under District B?
I think they have to be allowed.
Yeah, I was gonna look that up, but I think it's a protected use.
Yeah, I think Mark Raskin changed this to, well, having requirement of it. If they're allowed in the LCD, then, yeah, because it kind of doesn't, it's the same thing. Mark Raskin said they had to be allowed.
Okay. So, can I ask, on adult social daycare, why is that a no?
Because we're trying to encourage uses or allow uses to add to vibrancy of the downtown. So adult social daycare, you know, they drop elderly people off for the day and then they, the end of the day, and it really doesn't add to the vibrancy of a downtown. And it's a use that could be located elsewhere in the general district or... So.
It's a good use on the periphery of the district, but not in the core of the district.
Say that again.
Adult daycare, adult social daycare would be a good use on the periphery of the district, but not in the core of your downtown. So it makes sense to allow it in the general district. You often have, sometimes it's transit that is pick up in the morning and drop off. You know, you have morning and afternoon trips predominantly. But you don't have coming and going, and people who are patronizing, or the participants generally are not, often do not have the capacity to be going by themselves, patronizing downtown. So it's a better use to, as I said, on the edge.
It is currently allowed in all districts by a ZBA special permit. So it's not like we don't have any place for it.
Yeah, no, you should definitely have it in, within Manchester as an allowed use.
And then the last one is matters including the construction or alteration of any structure or use thereof or any in all part which is within the tidlands, lying below mean high water. So that is a planning board, special permit in both districts.
Before we go on and leave this table, I do have a question. I agree with most of it, but I have some questions about number four. Sorry, not to raise it for-
Number four, which one is it?
Uh, number four, conversion of an existing dwelling into a three-family dwelling with no increase in gross floor area. Why would we not, what, what's the thinking about it being planning board as opposed to just a yes?
I think, because we're trying to push them to have, in that conversion, how to make the first floor commercial. It would be allowed to do it under the mixed use. So it sort of becomes, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would become a mixed use.
If it has, if it has a commercial.
We would, we want them to add a commercial use.
Basically, you're allowing single-family homes to add, add another unit. But you're not, any, or you're allowing single-family homes to become, add two more residential units. Or they could become a mixed use if they really wanted that.
But you have to go to the planning board for, to make it a three-family.
The, the thing that I know with this, that strikes me is that you have to convert to a three-family with no increase in floor area. So the carrot that I have, that I see this trying to set up, because it seems like everybody wants mixed use, if that's what this is about and making mixed use, the carrot is, is that if I go mixed use, I can add to my structure.
Thank you, Mark.
I'm not saying it's enough, but.
Thanks for helping us.
Not a big enough carrot.
With a little carrot icon. Okay, let's talk about the mixed use. Somewhere there needs to be an addition to the definition that's mixed use, right?
So we have mixed use, we have a definition in, on the first page.
Why? Yes, sorry. Okay, mixed use, the building which residential uses are combined with commercial or community facilities, residential uses may be of four units in a building. In a building as opposed to on a lot. Did it say on a lot? Because if you had two buildings.
Mm-hmm, yep.
It would be a mixed use without first floor residential. That means that a dentist office upstairs, which you're living in, are decent.
And we may not need that second sentence, right? Because in the table, then we distinguish between mixed use with residential- or a partial, must occupy a portion.
It doesn't hurt for clarity.
No, it must, it could be a portion.
Wouldn't we rather have the dentist office on the first floor? Yeah, so.
I don't know why would we say yes to that, if anything, TB.
Okay, so now we're looking at the table. Let's just go, let's just stick with the definition for a second. A building in which residential uses are combined with commercial or community facilities, residential uses may be up to four units per lot. The commercial or community facilities must occupy a portion of the first floor along the front. Okay, that makes sense. And we've not said how much of a portion.
That's later.
That's later, that's a note, right? Okay, so then we have the mixed use table, and we now define all of our districts saying no everywhere, except in the general, with planning board, special permit. And even though we may have any mixed use uses, but for some, um, LCD is no. And downtown would be, downtown A would be yes on, without any first floor residential. And no proposed today in B. And then mixed use with first floor residential, planning board, special permit for downtown A. And Mark's proposal is no because of the discussion about Raska. I'd be considering it for planning board approval for B.
Yeah, I would too.
Oh, for sure. And maybe even yes, mixed use without first floor residential would be a yes.
If we're gonna do it in A, we should do it in B.
Oh, for number eight, I'm talking about number seven. Why would it not be yes across the district, the two districts? And planning board approval for number eight.
Oh, I guess I have it backwards. I would say it's, it's mixed use without first floor residential in District B would be either yes or planning board. And mixed use with first floor residential, I think I would keep as a no in B. Force B to have resident, have commercial on the first floor. We don't currently have any residential on the first floor in the Crosby's Harbor Point. Keep it that way. And I would say planning board, special permit. Since we don't have residential there today, we're gonna change it from a no, number seven. I would have it be a special permit. We're gonna go to forums and have conversations about this, so I think the question is, what do we want to present to hear from the public on?
We're gonna hear it tonight later.
I would say either yes or planning board for seven.
For both?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I would agree with Sue on eight, and I would say yes for District B for seven. Because we really, I mean, you do, increasing housing debt, the more, you're more likely to get smaller housing here, right? Smaller units. We do need housing, and it does increase the flow of people moving around in the downtown.
Okay, let's take them separately. I'm gonna, let's, anybody want to change mixed use without first floor residential in downtown District A to anything other than a yes? That's by right, okay? So let's look at downtown B. Mixed use with commercial on the first floor and no residential on the first floor. Should that be in next, in downtown B? Should it be, I'm hearing that we, I'm hearing that we want to change it from no. Does anybody want to advocate for it to be no? That's Mark. Peter? Okay, so now the question is, how many people want it to be allowed by right in B? And then I'm gonna ask how many want to be allowed by special permit. This is mixed use without first floor residential in the Harbor Point Crosby's area. And this is a draft that's going out to the public, this is not a, you know, so. Okay, how many people want to have it be yes?
I'm, I'm on the fence there.
On the fence, it's not a choice. Okay, how many people, how many people want to have it be a plant, this draft, this a planning board, special permit for line seven downtown B? Peter, do I hear, Peter's on this too.
Yeah, I didn't know, no, I, I would because of something that you just said, that this is a draft and will go to a forum. And I think because we're, it sounds like we're more or less split. Have it, have it, we're saying that, let the forums help us make that decision.
Okay. So we'll put it out as a planning-
Kick the can down the road.
Put it as a planning board for this, for this forum. Putting as a planning board, special permit for the forum, and here what we have to say. Okay? So then we're gonna go to the next one, downtown A. Mixed use with residential on the first floor is a planning board, special permit in downtown A. I don't think anybody's advocating to change that. Everybody's in agreement with that? Okay, and then downtown B. How about, let's maybe go with the easy one. Planning board, special permit. How many people would like to see us go forward with that?
In, in downtown B?
B. Residential on the first floor, mixed use.
This is a change from no residential.
Yeah. I'm gonna advocate for no, because I want to see commercials on the first floor in that district. That's the point. That's, that's what was our original intent. So let's keep it as a no. Is anybody gonna advocate for, this is, we're gonna hear from people, I'm sure in five seconds. That's in the future, but thank you for bearing with us. Okay. All right. This is, this is next, commercial use.
Conversion.
Conversion. Conversion. Isn't that redundant with the first, oh. First floor space to commercial space.
To residential.
Residential. Residential use on the first floor of the building.
Can you scroll up, please?
So is this, these are two new lines in our table, Mark?
Yeah, we had talked about adding this at the end of class meeting, so I'll still just put this in here for further discussion.
Conversion of first floor commercial space- Conversion of first floor commercial space to residential. Wouldn't that fall under? Do we need that?
Maybe redundant.
And residential use on the first floor of a building. Seems to me.
It's gonna be confusing.
I think those are confusing.
Yeah.
I don't know that we need those. I think we're gonna strike those, but I'm not sure they're helpful. For the moment, let's strike that, then Mark, if you.
I think, I think this was sort of early. Before we started making the definition of mixed uses and restricting some of the. Straight up residential only type uses. Done now, now. Don't think that's necessary.
Okay, so we don't need that. Okay, and then notes to the table. At the end of, note four, at the end of the last sentence, unless the building is a mixed use building in the downtown district, which is basically the carrot that Mark, that Adam just described. Note four is saying that you, an existing dwelling cannot be reconstructed to add more than three dwelling units. And such operation or reconstruction should not increase the floor area or volume except for shed dormers. And it says, now we would add, unless the building is a mixed use building in the downtown. And mixed use should probably be capitalized. That makes sense, this basically? Okay, and then note sixteen, which is. Is in the downtown district. So. And that should probably say downtown districts A and B. A commercial or community facility must occupy a portion of the first floor along the front of the building to a depth of twenty-five feet.
Where, where did we come up with twenty-five feet? Is that standard now?
Well, your storefronts are often forty feet, thirty to fifty feet wide depending upon your lot. So that would give you. Typically around a five hundred to plus. Storefront and storefront store retail spaces small, getting smaller. So that would enable small spaces as well as larger spaces. So it was a minimum. So people could clearly increase, but we didn't want it so small that it would. It's not just for an ATM to be at the, at the.
I think this room is about twenty-five feet, if these are four foot fixtures. That this is about twenty-five feet from this wall to that wall.
I took seaside one is seventeen feet. So I added three feet to get to twenty, and then there's a five foot bathroom. So if you have a half bath. And then small office slash store room. That gives you the twenty-five feet. The other thing is I have the floor plans for the cafe going in, it's central. The front portion, just where the seating is up to the ordering bar, where there's about twenty-five feet. Including the kitchens now, so.
It's a minimum.
That seemed like a reasonable depth. That's, entire space is much bigger. I don't have a lot of floor plans. Not a lot of that here, so. But that's how I came up.
So I'm just thinking about. What used to be in some of the spaces on School Street. The one that's now the Olive Wine, is that twenty-five feet?
That, I don't know, but.
Or the Travel Agency?
John, do you know what the depth that one School Street?
You think it is?
It is less than.
Sort of looks like it was.
So maybe we'll talk about trying to. I don't, I think it should be a reasonable thing, just because there are a few smaller ones. I don't think we necessarily have to go with the. The smallest one in town is twelve feet. I don't think we should do twelve feet. But.
Could you say at least as certain?
Yeah, that's right. So they, of course, can do.
To a depth of at least.
Say at least. Do we know what Rockport did? So Rockport just passed a very similar bylaw. I talked to the chair of the planning board the other day. And he said that it was enthusiastically supported at town meeting. So they, you know, for the same reasons. I don't know what they did. I know it passed, yeah, but, okay. Okay, so we'll talk about a little bit further about that gap. Dimensional requirements. Look fine on the printout, they just. So minimum lot area is six thousand square feet. Minimum frontage is sixty feet. Minimum lot width is fifty feet. And here's where the. The benefit of this district comes, I think, to landowners, is minimum front setback and minimum side setbacks go to zero. So that means that instead of having to go for variance every single time you want to do something because they're on the plant. Your setback is ten.
So in thinking about this a little bit more, since I put this together. I was thinking of separating A and B in this chart. And the reason is, is that in A, all the stores, the properties front along like central and backs. Front, in some cases, residential properties. So I had had it at zero, and I thought then there should be a rear, that's why it's in red, at ten feet. But Harbor Point's a little different. And so I thought that maybe B should. Should have ten feet on, on the side as well as the rear. Because on the. East side of Harbor Point, behind row of stores, you have a row of residential houses there, so. So I was thinking in B, I would have ten feet on the rear and the side.
But otherwise, the same.
Well, I'm just thinking, given that it's currently District A. It's currently. Twenty-two thousand, frontage one hundred and fifty, minimum lot of one hundred and twenty-five, minimum setback thirty. Minimum size is twenty and rear is forty. We may want to go a little higher than ten.
So it's the side that's along the tapestry.
Side setback, right. I would say we want to keep that at twenty.
Whatever is twenty now.
Twenty and twenty.
Remember, that would also apply to Crosby's.
Nope, but twenty feet is the building.
Right now, the building's probably more like. Thirty off the, well, it's got two frontages, but.
Yeah.
Because it's on the corner, but even those are setback on Summer Street, like fifty feet. And each street's probably at least thirty. And then the other side, you have a row of parking and a drive aisle, so that's. Another forty feet.
But what we're talking about is if it were rebuilt.
Right.
If. Not, not what is there today. So it was being rebuilt, it was twenty feet off the side. Side lot. Particularly, we're thinking about Harbor Point. You can always still get a variance. And that's from here to the wall. I don't think that's unreasonable.
Okay.
But you do want your core area to feel walkable and having a consistent. Street wall with fewer interruptions and every time you tend to have a side setback. That's an invitation for a driveway. And quite frankly, more driveways mean more curb cause, less parking spaces on the street and less walkability.
But here we're talking about the Harbor Point and Crosby's.
You know, Harbor Point is, is kind of an irregular lot. So in some ways, it invites more of a planned development style. So I think I would go with my earlier comment that it almost. To me as a separate, you know, kind of. Playing envision for.
Is there another type of mixed use? That is a planned development that should be added to the table for B? I don't know how you, what that means, but. Yeah, I don't know how you define it enough to, but I think that's what we're saying, is we don't really. Want, we really want to have. Design input into.
Yeah.
A larger.
Yeah, I think because of its size and character. As well, location, it almost lends itself to like a planned development style of zoning. Which part of the struggle is, it's a single lot, so you want to avoid spot zoning, but you also want to have some flexibility. And. You use zoning to implement a plan, so. There is no plan for the future of that parcel, but I think there's a lot. Discussion of what people think could be possibilities. But it's also an example where you might want to collaborate with the owner. So I think what this does is allow for some development there. But I think in your larger thinking about a downtown master plan. You've got to really have more focus on that parcel since it's a key parcel.
Then it also argues for the planning board special permit for that mixed use. So that we can guide.
Have some more discussion, yeah.
The discussion. As opposed to just allowing it by right.
The other thing, since we're creating another district, we can increase the minimum lot size. So that's not six thousand square feet with Crosby's and where Harbor Point is right now, at least Harbor Point is zone for.
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand. So it would lend itself to being chopped up into bigger parcels. And. Crosby's is, well, it's. One parcel is almost half acre and then portion.
Yeah, it's on two parcels.
Yeah, it's on two parcels, so it's a, it's a big piece as well. So doesn't necessarily have to be a six thousand square foot. District, so.
But that's important, that Crosby's today is two parcels. So in actuality, we could have two mixed use. There, again, another reason to keep the planning board special permit because we think of Crosby's as one parcel, but it's not. Two parcels. Okay.
So would you recommend a particular lot size? For B?
Not, I mean, I think it's just something for discussion, you know. If you, if that was redeveloped, I mean, I, I would. Like I said, I wouldn't really want residential development and I would put, allow all the commercial uses that you would want to see happen by right. So that. You know, over time, it would be redeveloped to, if, if ever, into. Different commercial use. So. I don't know if the lot size. Lot size is important if you want to do, allow for residential uses. That's. You allow for enough residential uses, it'll make it financially feasible to do so.
So in District A, we're gonna keep the side setback, the front setback is zero. District B, we're going to the public. Keep it at six thousand, sixty and fifty feet as the width. What about setbacks? That's where we started. I'm gonna propose front as ten, side setback as. I guess ten, what, twenty?
Ten.
Ten and rear setback is. Maybe, as ten as well.
Yeah.
You just, let's think a little bit more about those, but let's.
What did you say?
Back isn't, isn't as important for that district as side. But all those houses are, you look at the map, they're all up along Captain Street, so. Only one house that actually accepts toward that. So that would be the side.
Okay.
Did you say the minimum front setback was? I didn't catch.
We said ten. As a starting point.
Yeah. Yeah, ten, ten and ten.
Okay, and then lot coverage, you're proposing A and B be sixty percent by structures and eighty percent impervious. We want B to be slightly less than sixty percent?
Probably much more than sixty percent today.
Much more?
Well, parking.
No, I'm talking about structures.
Structures.
I mean, it's probably twenty percent right now.
Yeah, pretty low.
It's very low right now. I would like to see that, that go down. I mean, what do you think?
Forty percent the general district right now by structure.
You know what it is?
The general district today is.
Forty.
Yeah, forty percent by structures. And A is fifteen percent.
Why don't we look at some of the parcels and look at the actual numbers, so that I think that might give us a better sense of.
Yeah, I think those need to go down, so. Or B, anyway. Okay, let's to look at some data on that one. Actually, I did a Google Earth look when we come to parking. I'll, I'll save my file. Okay, accessory structures. Did I miss something?
I think the lot coverage on the impervious surface is basically what you're doing is at least twenty percent of the parcel needs to be impervious. And given your proximity to water and sea level rise, that is not a big requirement. And it's kind of like an investment in the future in terms of resiliency. You know, even if it's paved, you know, it, the, the use of impervious pavement, of pervious pavement. Or other permeability strategies of materials that would allow for parking. Is gonna be really important because you, you need, you need permeability in your downtown. And resiliency.
So we increase, do we decrease that number?
We don't have it now.
I know, but that's.
Well, we're saying on future developments, it's gotta be, you gotta use. No more than eighty percent can be impervious. So you need to have a strategy for twenty percent, the other twenty percent to be permeable. And that could include perme- And that could include permeable pavement, it could include other strategies to add permeability.
I think you're talking about turning parking areas into non-asphalt.
Impervious pavement, pavers.
Yeah, but that's.
And that's when zoning change, when a new use is.
When there's a new use or development. Not talking about existing conditions.
That would look a lot better, but I'm not sure I'm. We've got to think about, but the success of the downtown area, at least around Crosby's, is at least, is largely tied to automobile accessibility, for better or worse.
I totally agree with you, but that's why different, there are multiple strategies for addressing making parking areas more permeable without necessarily reducing parking spaces. And you've got a result, you've got a water, rising water challenge, you know, facing you.
I actually pulled off all the zoning, all the flood maps for this region, which I can share. It turns out that this particular district is just on the edge of, the flooding is more up Cap'n Street and that's at least the 2030, 2015 law. So I can just put them in the packet for. Okay, accessory uses, minimum distance from side and rear setbacks, five feet. A is 10 and general is 5. We get to parking, the residential, one to four units in the downtown districts, I'd say District A and B, one space per unit. Currently, it's one and a half, right?
Yes.
And then parking shall not be allowed between front of the building and the street. And add a new section, 6.1.9, commercial uses in the downtown districts shall be exempt from parking requirements except for the following uses: motor vehicle light service, repair body shop for motor vehicles, and hotels. So to me, that makes sense. Go ahead.
I was going to say, I did not, forgot to split this into A and B.
Yeah.
And I would leave that for A, but for B, I would say that they need to be.
Right. So currently, there's a whole table of all of these things, of how many spaces you need for each use. And I would say in B, we leave a table because, you know, we've got retail and other things, and we already have, I think that's the biggest reason to split it into two districts, is in the District A, not to require the parking, and then I'm going to comment on that. And then District B, we should, whatever you.
I think it may be sacrificing a lot of retail use if you do that.
The parking already exists at Crosby's and.
At Crosby's.
And at Harbor Point. I'm saying B, District B.
Yeah, I know, but at B, well, Harbor Point, there are only probably, I don't know, 15, 20 spaces for the public to use, the rest of them are all reserved.
But if they wanted to make a, if they wanted to make a change, they wanted to do mixed use with residential above and change out and, you know, expand their retail, they would have to reduce the private spaces to, or use the private spaces for the residential use.
I'd like to see some analysis.
That's why they're going to have a special permit. I guess my point is for residents, for downtown District B, we should not delete the commercial parking.
Well, maybe I would say unless a waiver is granted by the planning board or something.
And the.
Just to make it a little more flexible.
How about have the parking in District B be by special, or be subject to site plan review or some, so that we see what's going in, what the total use is, or something that's, we have a whole use table, which may be obsolete actually. We have never really spent time looking at it, nor would I know how to look at it in terms of, you know, evaluating it, it's just prescriptive. So maybe the parking in District B is with, I don't know, what do you think?
I think site plan approval and, you know, clearly your existing regulations provide a framework. You know, you don't really have, my recollection is you don't really have much on shared use parking strategies.
Right.
Which is often used in downtown. There's some communities that Plymouth has one, that if a small parcel doesn't have enough parking to have, for their code, they allow payment in lieu of a parking space that then goes to a fund that the town then uses to develop public parking spaces. Not massive ones, but small ones that have been tucked in here and there, so it's been a way to provide parking.
Well, that's works if you have a place to go by.
Right.
Which I think there's been so much.
Plymouth has more space than you do, but you're, it's amazing how they've tucked in some of their public parking spaces, so they're visible, but they need signs, they're not, so, yeah, that goes back to looking at the parking management plan, which, yeah, that's another.
Another whole thing, right.
Another task.
I guess my strong feeling right now for, parking is always an issue, right, for voters, perceived or real. And so I think to delete parking for commercial uses in either district is going to be a challenge. And certainly in B, where we already have, I mean, you can forget the hot summer day when you're trying to go to the beach, but other than that, if you want to go to one of the retail establishments, that Harbinger would be fine. And that we should have some sort of reference to the parking table and ask, and some sort of planning board review based on the application. So that, to your point, if we have something that's a morning use and an evening use, they could potentially share spaces, if that makes sense. But if they're all nine to five uses or whatever, then that's, because parking, we want this to pass, we take out all parking for commercial uses, this is all for nothing.
But we also want it to work, but if it doesn't, if we pass something that.
Right.
Doesn't help the downtown, we've done nothing.
That's true, but you have to pass it. Parking is a. We say that parking has to be behind the building, and that it really only applies to District, downtown District A, not downtown District B.
We might want to allow it on the side of the.
Right.
But you don't want.
We're saying it's not in front.
Yeah. Go on in front, but that doesn't mean that the sides are included.
But in B, at least currently, it's in front everywhere. And realistically, if you're going to, you wouldn't flip the, I mean, that'd be very expensive to flip that. Have we made a provision for District B to have parking be, not necessarily prohibit it being in front?
Yeah, I can adjust that.
I mean, do people agree with me?
I think it should be behind the buildings and all these. Just because Crosby's is there, it could be there forever.
I agree with you at Crosby's, but what about Harbor Point?
Harbor Point's not in front of the building now anyway.
That's true, the frontage is on, but if they were to put a subdivision road in there, divide off a bunch of 6,000 square foot.
Put the parking in back.
Redesign.
Okay.
I don't know. Leave it for now and hear what people say.
Yeah.
All right.
Sarah, are you suggesting to take out the new section 6.1.9 about parking?
No, 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 I'll adjust it to be A and B.
I suggest.
And so one other thing, in your zoning, I'm just.
Wait a second, I'm still not clear. So, because there was a whole discussion about parking for commercial uses, and this says commercial uses are exempt, are we going to keep them exempt?
I'll separate.
In District A.
District A, and District B will be, still require it, so also, you do have a special permit provision where the planning board or the special permit granting authority, if it's not the planning board, may grant a special permit to waive any parking or loading requirement. One such waiver shows a better design because no detriment to the neighborhood. So if someone's redeveloping a portion of Harbor Point or Crosby's property gets redeveloped and there are a few spaces short, because you're now requiring that to meet the requirements, you can with a special permit, if it's, if really you feel it really is going to work with a few less spaces, you can issue a special permit for that, and that's in your current zone.
Where is that?
Page. 6.1.8, page 39.
Okay, got it. Yep, I see it.
Okay, the other, just to complicate things, well, we can talk about this later, but the reduction of parking from one and a half to one space per residential unit was, we talked about having that be a separate article to, so we can talk about that strategically.
I feel it's.
It's part of the.
It's kind of all part of this, yeah, so I, that's why it was a separate article before, but I kind of folded it in for further discussion, so.
And then a new section, 8.5.
So I thought we should have a section where we, if there are additional requirements we want for, for the downtown districts, this is the section where we add some of these additional requirements. So one is, I put a purpose for downtown districts, and then I added the design review reference that we had talked about before. And so we keep talking about housing, so if we want to add or allow housing with some extra requirements, we can put it in here. If there are other things we want to put in this, in this section, 8.5 for the downtown, we can, we can build on that. You know, it might be a use that's, that you allow or you allow by a special permit, but you want to outline some extra things.
So you're proposing that we use the design guidelines for A and B? Objective and concept, I think it's a bureaucratic, will, people feel it's bureaucratic and.
Well, I think you're removing other bureaucratic items, issues by making most of the lots now conforming, they no longer have to go to the zoning board step, and if someone is redeveloping a site, to, for the planning board to currently look at the building design at the same time with the assistance of some design professionals, at the same time they're doing site plan review, that makes sense. And given that half the district is in a historic district, they're going to look at it kind of at the same time.
Would it make sense to say historic review or design, the community housing design guidelines, because otherwise you could have conflicts between the two, and historic is, it seems like.
Right.
You don't need to give them two sets of design guidelines.
And that would check up like the, the end of Beach Street, Thomas and Harbor Point.
Okay. I think we start with that and see what people think of that. I was going to, any other discussion on that topic? I wanted to.
Can I ask a question, just for efficiency? Is there going to be a public input part of this, or is that going to come later?
No, both. I'm going to get to some, yep, tonight, I'm going to, we're just about to get to that, we're just walking, I know you want to.
I'm fine if it's later, because you talked about having forums.
Yeah, we will have forums as well, but let, let me just get to one other issue that at least I want to get to on, and that is, I looked at Google Earth and I encourage, I'm not going to pull it up right now, but encourage everybody to do that, and maybe we can have it for the next meeting, is that there are a number of lots that actually are greater than 6,000 square feet that, I guess it goes to the lot coverage, and that currently have parking behind. So for example, I think Callas has some parking behind, and, and so if we, in that district, don't require parking for a, any of that commercial space, maybe, you know, for cars, we effectively could push those cars that are currently parked behind there onto the, onto the street where we, you know, are perceived to have. So I think that goes to lot coverage, is the way we think, is the way we look at that, so I think to your point, let's look at the lot, current lot coverage. The other thing is loading and loading dock space probably should, so if you are a restaurant or a, I don't know, right now, I think a lot of the trucks stop on the street and just load in the front door, and maybe the businesses are small enough that that's fine, but what do you advise on that?
I mean, probably Crosby's is probably one that they have a loading dock.
Yeah.
I believe they's hardware, the hardware store might have a loading area.
Yes, they do.
Most of your other stores, I don't think have loading areas from what I can, from walking around. And, and, you know, most are not large inventory items, so they're probably more UPS type delivery of their stock. So, restaurants, you do get, you know, daily or weekly deliveries, I mean, they, I mean, you know, it, it goes back to managing curb space. Restaurant deliveries, in my experience, usually are daytime, you know, between 7:00 AM and usually 3:00 PM. Oftentimes, really 10 to 3 is their primary out, delivery hours.
Sometimes early too. So you don't think, given the size of our bases, probably not a big issue?
Well, I think maybe if it meets, once a, a store meets a certain size threshold, you probably got to need to look at servicing requirements more often.
Yeah, again, for, for kind of what you're looking for, for small scale. Again, for, for kind of what you're looking for, for small-scale, commercial or mixed-use development, really, along Main, Beach and Central Street, you're really not going to be able to provide any sort of loading. And if the current way of doing business will continue. If Crosby's ever got redeveloped, and they come in with a site plan for the planning board to review, and it was included some large-scale development, you would look at, well, how are there, even if it was residential above, and it was all commercial on the first floor, you would probably be a big commercial space. You would look at, how, how are they going to get deliveries there? And where are they going to park? And what types of trucks are going to come in? But, you know, this is kind of the nature of compact, small-scale downtowns is, yeah, that truck, our double parks floor fifteen minutes while they drop stuff off. Usually, they are, you know, will adjust their schedules. They're not here on the busy times, particularly, you know, weekend beach days and that kind of stuff.
Is it self-select?
Let's ask the question, has it, you, you guys patronize downtown Manchester all the time. Is double parking of trucks a problem right now?
Sometimes.
Mostly not.
It's part of the vitality of the town.
It's not a problem, but.
Yeah.
Causes a problem.
Yeah, okay. So, also, perhaps there's self-selection. If you don't have a loading dock, you might not take, bring your loading dock-requiring business to downtown. Okay, so, let's not worry about that. Okay, let's take public comments. John, you've been.
Beat Manchester.
Thing, I think that, that comments really, like, an hour, an hour and a half ago, about town needing a master plan and a vision. I think we've really suffered from not having that. We don't really know what Beach Street wants to be. At the moment, we're, like, trying to plug holes in the dam, right? Like, and I don't feel like we have a real understanding of what we want downtown. That's, that's my opinion. And I'm, as you guys are probably not surprised to know, I'm really not in support at all of any way that we would limit any residential in this town. We are already too restrictive, because we only allow four units in an existing building, which is enemic, right? But then, to take a zone, an area, a lot of these property, directly next to the MBTA, largest developed lot that we have in our town, and say, hey, we're not going to allow any residential there ever, I think is asthma, okay? It is, you know, I think we'd all agree, and I think you guys have said so, that we, we want mixed use. We want a vibrant downtown. Totally agree with you, right? We want to protect the retail, but not at the cost of having residential as well. Otherwise, what's the point, right? We need people to live downtown. We need to increase the density for the four units and existing, all that stuff. And we have to find a way to allow more than that. So, when, when you said that allowing four units and a lot like that is stupid, it is. The problem isn't the lot. The problem isn't the, it's, the problem is the, the limit that we have set in our town for only four units. At some point, that's got to change. I think I've many, many things to say, I'm trying to remember them all.
And you can always email us. We do read.
Okay. So, one, a strategy I have seen in many towns, which seems much simpler than what we're trying to do here. Instead of creating this mixed use in the table, all that stuff, what several towns have done is simply, under residential use in the districts where it might be allowed, where you want to encourage mixed use, put a little note next to the planning board or the yes, and it says that residential is allowed with first-floor retail. Here. Why can't we do that? If you want to build a project and have four units in it, in this district, you must have retail on the first floor, or you don't play the game, right? My opinion, if you wanted to have twelve units in a lot that, that was possible and you could park it, you should be allowed to do that too. In fact, if you could get forty units at Beach Street with first-floor retail, only with first-floor retail, and you can park it, you should be allowed to do that too.
When you say you can park it, you mean you can.
Meaning you can, you can create the amount of required parking in order to do that. So, that should be allowed.
Well, what I think John means is that, rather than have a four-unit cap, cap is sort of determined by the number of parking units that you can buy.
Or the size of a lot.
Well, then, with some.
Parking is often your most difficult thing to fit on a parcel, so parking requirements determine everything.
Right.
Yes. They do, but not necessarily. Look at the building that Ed Flannery just renovated in the corner of school and Central. Everybody loves it. There are eleven residential units in there. And a little store. And everybody is writing about, on, you know, on social media about, what a fantastic thing that is. Yes, it's fantastic, because people love what happened architecturally. It's a beautiful building, and it's got a lot of housing for people who need it, and it's got a little storefront, so what's wrong with that? So, why are we worried about having that, you know, on the other end of town? And why couldn't we have that all through the downtown? There isn't any, I said, that building doesn't have any parking? I don't know how they've managed. They have a little parking, and they manage with it. And those apartments, I'm sure, will be popular. So, I don't see why we couldn't have that all over town. Right now, it seems that the push generally is to have mixed use with the residential feature on the upper floors, providing the vitality necessary to, for the, for the businesses to flourish downtown. They're doing it in all the towns that are experiencing successful revitalization. And that, another big thing that's happening is apartments are now functioning as offices. So, because so many people are now working from home, so obviously, the office market is in a downturn, because people are working from home. So, the residences downtown, you know, operate as more just, more than just residences. So, you are getting more vitality. So, it's something that's important for us to think about, and maybe take a cue for what's happening, where we see in other towns where real revitalization is taking place. I noticed that Rantoul Street is often, often referred to on Manchester social media derisively. Like, Manchester looks down on Rantoul Street as being something that is somehow a highly undesirable thing that happened. But actually, in Beverly, they took a, really, a not very attractive area, and they have revitalized it now, because they brought all those apartments with young people who brought their money and their lifestyles, and now all the restaurants are there. And Rantoul Street has become really a lot, a lively place, where you see lots of young families strolling, and you never saw that before. So, why do we look at that derisively? There's some snobbery in Manchester that, you know, looks down on that as being really just too proletarian for Manchester, or something like that.
During, during the 3A process, during, during a meeting here, I said something which I think is still true. We look like the town that doesn't like housing, that doesn't want housing. And at that time, I said, I, it was 3A, which I thought was a great opportunity to try and encourage it. And I know we took a route very carefully to, to get it passed, but it didn't do what it was intended to do. It may not do what it was intended to do, which is to generate housing, right? I still think, with the thing that you guys have drafted today, we look like the town that doesn't want housing.
Well, we are the town that doesn't want housing, because I, I listened to those meetings, and the 3A committee stayed involved. That, that was their purpose, is to create those districts in a way that discouraged housing.
No, that's not correct.
Well, Chris.
What we, what we decided was, we wanted to get through.
I heard John Moore say that.
Okay, so let's, we're not talking tonight about the 3A. So, let's, um, let's get your input on the downtown district in front of us.
Could we, could we please get more people from the public as well to weigh in if possible?
Yep, we will, thank you. Just, I don't see your hand raised, but Adam.
Well, I, a, a number of points that I think we can cover, you know, in forums and, you know, meetings. But, this proposal still has the defect that I mentioned last time, which I think is really, really important, because it's the unintended consequence here. And to go, and to make it clear, and Erica wrote about it in the Cricket last week, and I don't think she got it quite exactly right. And it's actually, I, I did it sometime, it's even worse than what I described at the forum meeting last Monday. If you have a residential use, this new proposal that you have, in, I think, it makes it a pre-existing non-conforming use. And our bylaw is, so if you have a residential property downtown, and you change the first floor to commercial, you want to start a business, going to go for it. You put that business in on the first floor, it doesn't work out so well, or maybe it lasts five years, whatever. This new proposal, even when, if you change it to retail for one day, under our bylaw, you can't go back to residential without maybe a special permit, depending on how it comes up. Nobody's going to want to do that. So, you are telling homeowners, like myself, you, you don't dare go retail, because if you do, you're going to lose your residential rights forever. So, you are going to have this unintended consequence of people that might have wanted to try a business. And you've got, you know, Four Beaches won, you had Zax, it's, those businesses are going to not happen anymore. And those businesses have been the lifeblood, I think, of Manchester, at least when I've been here, to see these small little shops and that are in these.
There are only two, there are only five businesses, five properties in this downtown district that are classified as single-family by the accessory.
But you still have some that are, like, I mean, mine is classified as multi, it's not multi, it's all rented out to one resident, so that's six. And that's a lot. You doesn't have a lot of properties to work with. And take all those properties out of the picture and have them say, we're not going to go retail, because we feel like we're going to lose our rights, that's, you're going to lose stores.
Okay, online, are there any hands up? Sandy Rogers, I assume that's Sandy Rogers? Sandy R., go ahead.
Hi, yeah. I appreciate the idea of building out the downtown when you're evaluating sort of a plan and of what you might consider in the district and density. I think one of the issues to consider is how much open space there is and, and sort of creating, walking within the space, not just on the street front, to create the vitality. So, i- if you think about Harbor Point and places like that, if they split the lot, if they build up and build more density, I think that's one of the major concerns in, in town. I heard them talk about Rantoul, it's like, we don't want to close in the space. We don't want to build such density that we're losing the, sort of, the, the feel of the town, and you want to promote people walking around, as well as just go. You want people to linger. You want, sort of, thinking about how are you going to walk, a walking pattern that's not just by the street? Like, we have the parking spaces behind Town Hall, and we've got this little alleyway walk. And, like, we should be really thinking about how do we create patterns of movement? Just something to think about as you work through this, thanks.
Thank you, Sandy. I think that's a good point, but I'm not sure it's a zoning, hard to zone that issue. But I think that the proposal, we have to look at our general district in entirety, can think about that issue. Anybody else online?
Well, I think, I think you want people in the community to feel comfortable walking downtown and being downtown, not just going to a spot and leaving. And I think that is important, and I think minimizing the curb cuts, minimizing the parking required, as found hearing, is definitely important. And while I'm, it's, it's sort of a double-edged sword. The more residential you add, the more parking, we're going to have to figure out where that's going to go. And how far away from those spots are residents going to have to walk and try to find parking? Or the workers going to have to try to find parking? And so, I think I heard someone say, we, we, we really needed to think planning, not just zoning, around all that, because then you understand what limitations building into the zone. So, anyway, thank you, thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else with their hand raised online.
I, I have a, I have a comment, I'm calling in, Lorraine I. Vani, twenty-eight, Pine Street.
Okay, thank you, Lorraine, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your work. I just want to remind everyone, most of whom, uh, most of you, a lot of you sat on the 3A task force that were involved. And the discussion on Harbor Point, a reminder there that there is an amendment to the deed, which I did send to all of you at one point, which restricts that particular building as of right now, to all commercial. So, that goes directly to, you know, some of the discussion that you, you know, you've had tonight. So, that's one point. One of the things that during 3A was very important to me was the preservation of commercial. And this is what you're all about tonight. I understand that there are developers in town and a number of other folks who would like to see a lot more housing. And there's a, a need for it, and it's a place for, you know, discussion of this. But tonight, the emphasis should be on commercial, in preservation of commercial. And that's what I thought I would be hearing. But what I'm hearing mostly is, you know, housing, establishment of housing. I think, that's not to say we shouldn't have re, mixed use, we should. But let's concentrate on, basically, protection of our commercial zone. And that's what I want to hear. And I'm not hearing that tonight, unfortunately, so that's just my opinion, and I hope you appreciate that. The other thing I do want to bring up is on adult daycare. I am a big proponent of trying to take care of seniors in this town. And I am a little offended, basically, by what I've heard. We have a senior center that we're investing in, and that many of us are going to contribute to. And quite frankly, there is, without a doubt, an ability here to have, you know, senior, I want to call it adult care, daycare. And we need to look at that, not just poo-poo it, because it doesn't fit a narrative. We need, we have certain needs in this town. It's not all about our developers and the rent and things of that nature. We have needs in this town, one of them is for seniors. And adult daycare is a doable thing at our prospective senior facility that we're going to have. So, I want to make sure that I get that point in as soon as possible, and before you finalize whatever it is that you're going to present at the, at the zone. The other thing is, during 3A, we retained, we did a reversal on the number of the parking, one, one space per unit to back to one point five. So, I guess, I don't quite understand what we're doing here with parking. But one of the things that we need to be very cognizant about is the fact that we cannot force more. is the fact that we cannot force more cars, more vehicles on the streets. So whatever it takes to keep these vehicles off the streets, I'm, I'm in favor of, because I live on time and it's clear to me that we need parking for contractors, caretakers, delivery vehicles, people. In downtown now, you're talking about, you know, unloading for different types of businesses and things of that nature. So what we need to do is make sure we pay attention to underlying zoning, 1.5. I don't understand what this business is about, you know, bringing it down to 1 again. So I thought we withdrew this, adding to the night on with 3A, and yet we are resurfacing a lot of these things. So that's what I have to add tonight. I don't want to write another email. I do want to, one last point. I do want to remind everyone that I did write an email. It's dated 8/22. And I wrote it to everyone. And it was a reaction to population growth in this town. And I think that whatever we do, whatever we do, we need to just kind of throw an umbrella over it and say, okay, what happens if, SLB, what happens if, V. V. D. M. 3A, what happens if? So, you know, let's kind of think of that as well. I know that people want to take every space that we have and make it residential. But at the same time, we have to be able to traverse the streets. And also there's public safety to consider. I know I sound like a broken record, but I'm gonna get my points in. So I appreciate it. If, and I know that Yale shares this with, with everyone, perhaps not with Mr. McKay, but I'm not sure. But it's an August 22nd email. I would like you to read this a bit and take a look at it. And I'd like a response from Mr. Rosneck to it as well.
Thank you.
And that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I know that we just, we cannot always respond to, you know, that you, you, we, it's a hard, I know Mark has seen your email, we have seen your email, but there are a lot of questions, a lot of demands in that email. And I think when you, we're not always able to respond to hypothetical analyses, that the planner has to take direction from the town administrator, not from, not even from us. So.
Yeah. One, one thing to point out to Lorraine is that the, the area where the senior center is and the community building from the church that's right behind it, and Legion Hall, those are not in the downtown district. They are in the generals, remaining in the general district. So that option for senior daycare and any of those properties would still be there.
Okay, great. Thank you. The other thing, I think we've heard, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've heard. Anybody else have anything that we haven't heard yet? Uh, go ahead, John. One more thing. Yeah?
I think property behind Town Hall, this parking lot, the masons, the Legion, and also the sewage treatment area, that sewage treatment plant's not gonna be there forever. At some point in the, in the future of the town, that's gonna move. And this whole area back here, with its proximity to the center of town, not just to this center of town, but also to Crosby's and the train, I think that spot is a really interesting opportunity for the town. I would suggest that we try and incentivize that somehow and make the future of it more rather than less, and include some possible use.
Okay, thank you. What I want to do now is jump to, is there any other policy, things around the downtown effort that we've been talking about? The one, I will take the chair's prerogative, but if anybody has anything else they want to add, please, yeah, go ahead.
Question on the height?
Yeah.
Because I know it's not, we don't call it out. I'm just wondering what, what our thoughts are about that, because that's defined under general district.
Right. So the proposal, Mark, is to keep that no change, correct?
Okay. I have one quick thing on height. If you guys are looking to create this vibrant mixed use, but don't worry, I'm not suggesting another story. But, you know, one of the things, you know, as a, as a retail guy, that is super important to create spaces that people want to come to hang out at, they have to be nice. And giving a few feet of height as part of this process is in the mixed use category to allow for a little bit higher ceiling, I think, to develop some of these rental spaces without, you know, going crazy and changing the landscape of downtown, I think would be a good idea, like three or four feet.
So height in the commercial space. Interesting.
So.
For that reason.
Yeah, I can hear that comment. Some urban designers, and I know the city of Boston is now on their commercial area requiring with mixed use buildings, the first floor be 14 feet from floor to ceiling.
That's.
Which, well, because retail usually want higher ceilings, restaurants, because you're also then doing your HVAC and lower. So then on other floors, it's either 10 foot or 12 foot. So, you know, then for like a, you know, three-story building, you're at now 24 plus 14, 38, 40 feet.
Okay.
And sometimes you'll think that's four stories, but it really isn't. So, and part of it is we're needing more and more room these days for whether you're putting heat pumps in, whether or not you're putting electronics and technology and HVAC systems that we didn't have before. So.
So one of, one of the, again, sort of that carrot is if we could allow an additional X feet in the commercial floor and a height.
You have to be over all too, because you can't.
Yeah, no, it'd have to be a 35 plus.
If you look at buildings that allow shorter spaces on their first floor, they look squatty. They don't, it doesn't, it doesn't work.
Create that.
Okay, that's a good thought. Thank you. I'm gonna just at least say, in terms of wrapping up, maybe we each take a chance. I'll just take one, one moment from, I'll start. And that is, this is a balance. We want, I mean, I can appreciate the need for vision, the need for the opinions that say we should be building out more residential. But I've, I've been around a while. And unfortunately, Manchester has, we need two-thirds of voters at town meeting to pass the zoning change. And change is hard for some of us. And I, you know, meaning as members of the community. And I think we have to put something forward that we think will pass. That's, you know, because I think this issue is really important. And it may be that we're gonna do this incrementally with some of the more far, more forward-thinking changes that are things that are right. I don't know if right is the wrong word, desired. But I think we're, that this is, you know, we just heard somebody say parking is, you know, essential or block coverage, which is a way of saying open space, right? Or, you know, so I think we have to be pragmatic in the zoning, not, not cowardly. I think that this is actually not cowardly. So that's what, it's a balance. And we won't know until we go to town meeting where, where, if we've struck the right balance. But I do believe it is a balance. I think that there are differing opinions about those core issues around density and parking and character. And I think the comment about Ranthool is about scale and design guidelines. I think that's the objection. It's aesthetic, not with, and without knowing or even thinking about the connection between the residential and the economic development potential. So I'm not saying you're wrong, you know, this, the idea of more residential is wrong in any way. But I think we have, I feel really strongly that we need to get this mixed use in our zoning passed. So that's where, but I think we have some work, still work to do here from the public to see where the public, the people who come to the forums, public. So anybody else want to say anything? Did EFC or disagree?
Not disagree. But I do think it's important for people like Lorraine to understand that zoning is not an economic development plan.
Right, absolutely.
But it, but it has to at least allow an economic development plan. And I think it's really important for people to understand that supporting retail space does not just mean not allowing residential development, because it's the residential development that's gonna support retail space. And the reason that businesses are struggling is because we've got a much older population that's not buying as much as younger people living in restaurants and grocery stores and everywhere else. And if we don't get them here, no matter what we do to zoning, we're gonna lose the retail space. So I think this is part of the strategy that we have to sell.
Anybody else want to say? Sandy?
Um, I would say, I mean, I'm not quite sure exactly the dynamic of the conversation where housing and commercial seem to be at odds. But it seems to me, the whole idea of mixed use is that they can proceed together and are, in fact, necessary partners in success. I mean, nobody's saying, certainly, I mean, I don't think anybody on the board is saying, oh, just commercial. You gotta have residential.
Yeah, we just made that change tonight.
Yeah, exactly. So, so there's that. And then I wanted to add to your response to Rusty, because the comment we got often at the MBTA zoning was about Ranthool Street.
I'm not suggesting the scale of Ranthool Street.
Well, no, it's, it's more than just scale. It's partly scale. But it's also what, what I hear people saying when they talk about what they like about town is they like the texture of the town, meaning the variety. And one of the things that's happening with Ranthool Street, while it's wonderful, I think it's pretty great, but doesn't belong here, is that it's all very new and very kind of the same. And so that's, I think that's what people are looking for, somehow to get new things to happen, but to keep it at scale and with some texture.
I agree. It has to be done right architecturally. And that's probably the most important thing. My only point is, obviously, our daily concern downtown, with my family that are in our businesses, is the vitality of the town. And long-term, we are convinced, without question, that the commercial area is going to do better and better. We have no plans for, we do not believe that a conversion of, you know, the downtown area residential on the first floor is in the cards. Just don't think. I think the way that the town is a wonderful town, it will support its businesses. And there's plenty of room for growth and, you know, the economic vitality. So, but it would be, I think, better to have some more housing downtown, so there'd be more liveliness, if it's done architecturally well.
Any other boards, comments from any of the board members?
Yeah, I've got something I can. Thanks. Just a couple of, reacting to a couple of comments that were made tonight that I want to make sure the board keeps in mind as we go through this process. There was a comment that we don't really have a master plan that's guiding this conversation. And I just want to remind us that we, we do, actually. It's, it's at the end of its livelihood, but we do have one. That was quite, is quite thorough too, and contains a lot of the findings that we've been discussing for the past several months. And I just want to remind us that that is there, and we should use that as a resource. The other is that John mentioned simplicity in these bylaws. And I can't emphasize that enough. I think we're addressing a sizable section of our zoning bylaws through this process. And I think if we can just keep in mind the opportunity to simplify when possible, I think that will go a long way in helping us get buy-in from the town, allowing all townspeople to understand. Because frankly, prior to being on the planning board, when I read some of these zoning bylaws, I couldn't really understand them, which led to some of my misunderstanding of them. So I just would, would like us to keep that in mind as well. Otherwise, I think it's really important that we emphasize through these conversations that this is a process. We're at the beginning stage of this process, and the town will be actively involved and invited to participate in that process to bring us to a place where hopefully we can find, here's that word curse, consensus.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. Let's jump in our agenda while we still have Kathy here. Thank you, everybody. I want to just talk a little bit about how we're gonna communicate this. I threw, I put together, and I'm sorry I didn't put in the packet. I have a little thing go on this weekend that I didn't say on. And so I'll just sort of share this with you. So I think it doesn't look too different than what I think we've already talked about. But the dates I have here are a little bit too ambitious, but nonetheless. We need to get a few things done on our website that at least introduce to people what we're trying to do, where we are. Kathy had a slide deck previously, put the draft zoning, put the map of the proposed DIPRIC, and then some frequently asked questions. I started some at the bottom of the document. I will share this into the packet. And then form number one, I suggested that we do that at the mid to end of October with a, starting, do the first one with a site walk, because I think that's really helpful. People need to know where we are. And then return here, do a discussion, sort of intro, just a site walk. And then a second one where we start inside and then have a site walk after. It's, that's our two formats, maybe. And then a third forum and a fourth forum, schedule those. And then start to present to some community groups, select board, and then a public hearing. Develop a walking video. And I'd like people to think about, maybe help, volunteering to help with that. Tiffany can help us.
We need Tiffany.
Yes, we need Tiffany on all these things. I'm thinking if we can get a walking video done by the, this, during the month of October. It's, I was gonna say it was one district, it's two districts. And we're targeting April as the town meeting date, which means our public hearing has to be around about February 15th or so. I'll send that to you. I started a list of frequently asked questions. We'll create a document for people to put some in. And, and so I guess I'd like, I know, these are some of those that I came up with. I think parking is probably what is mixed use. Maybe we can all think about these, send them to Mark, who can start to draft some of these. And if people are interested in helping with any of these, I would love to hear from you. I know Mark, Brian's have a big event. Maybe you can help before that with at least the questions and how you think we should frame this up. But we probably should have a working group on this communications plan fairly soon. That seems to have worked well before to have a small group. Does that make sense?
So I just had, oh, sorry, finish, no, finish. Okay. So Sarah had shared this with me. So Sarah had shared this with me, and I've been thinking about it a lot over the past weekend. And one of the big things that I think worked really well with the MBTA zoning task force is that everybody had, had a piece of it. And so I think, and these are each huge pieces. I mean, the video, I mean, that just took, it took a long time. It took many takes. It was, they were really difficult to do. And it's a really good idea, and we should definitely do it. But we need to split up the work. And the same thing with the frequently asked questions. If we could split up maybe topics and just so that everyone's not thinking about all the same things. This is just my takeaway from that process. And with, and I think we should get Tiffany involved because she's the one that has to get everything on the town part of the website and the communication, you know, in the tide and the Instagram and all of that. It's great that we have it on the planning board website, but piece of the website, but if it's not more.
Much more district.
And, you know, the sooner I think, the better. So the other thought I had in splitting up the work is that the, even though we have two areas now, they comprise a lot of property. And one way to split up the work is that we could constant zone in on, you know, a group of properties. So we could each become familiar with those properties, and when it's time to do the video, whoever's walking around for that, that particular one, they'll, they'll get all that data. But knowing what the zoning is there now and, you know, what, what uses in that building is, I think that will help a lot if we can split up content by region. And just rather than everybody trying to learn every single piece of property in the areas that we're trying to, to cover, because when we get to the forums, there's no way that everybody can have all that body of knowledge and be responding to the question. So I, I just, as I said, I've been thinking about it a lot, and there's just, there's a way we can think to split up the work, whether it's concentrating on areas or properties or some do the videos and others don't. I mean, whatever it is, the sooner we can sort of portion it out, I think, the more successful we'll be when we start the forum.
So when you say a body of knowledge, are you talking about potential reuses of all these properties?
Well, someone's going to ask, well, how's that property used now? Okay, and how high are the ceilings, you know, or, or, you know, what's the zoning allow for that now? And so what are you doing with this house? I mean, you have the questions, you remember that.
We do have a pretty good data source.
Yes, yes.
We do have a pretty good data source, and there are actually only 40 properties that are not municipally owned or federally owned in the two districts.
Right, 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 right.
So it's not so many properties, and there's.
But 40 is still 40.
Yeah, 40 is still 40. Maybe by neighborhood, I mean, I don't know. I can't remember how we did it before.
Our district.
Yeah, that's true. So they're two districts.
One observation, and we did this with the MBTA, where we didn't drill down to the individual properties.
Well, we did when we did, had to do the videos.
We walked around the districts and, but it wasn't quite drilling down to each individual property and what can happen on each property. Such a great, great, I think we got to be careful about doing that here as well, that someone may not like what can happen on this property, or they like the general concept. Hearing that from people who are property owners or work with business owners here, and they like most of what we're doing, but there's still, you know, there's certain things that if they had to vote for it, they still might not. So they, they just be careful about drilling down too much. I mean, we have to with a couple of big parcels that at least I am figuring that out, but, you know, I think people, people, you know.
But I do think Sue makes a, her larger point is to share the work among all of us. And one thing that happened on the site walk while it was really great that we did is everybody gets strung out and there's conversations, you know, there's 10 different conversations going on. Some of them have nothing to do with the downtown district. So one way to do it is to take the seven of us and have seven tours, so that we're doing it in small groups with a script, and that we are all saying more or less the same thing, but we're all hearing, we're able to then hear the five people that come with, or maybe do them pairs. So we do three tours, might make more sense than we have, we're hearing pairs. We're all basically making the same points, but we have a lot more opportunity for that one-on-one conversation, and we don't have a, a string of people that goes from a school street to, you know, the bookstore, just drive out along the road.
I think, I think you may, Tiffany regularly did things like fed, so there was always a beginning. You said something, I think, I couldn't see it very well, but about having a beginning or an end, you know, so you gather people together. So everybody kind of processes what they've seen. And Tiffany often had food, which was a desirable draw, either at the beginning or the end. And I think that more even than having three different tours, you know.
Combination.
May, yeah, might do the job.
And I don't know if you saw in your packet, but Richard Smith did a map for us, I'll show it real quick, on what the existing uses are, but sort of to Sue's point about, you know, what's there today.
And there's a whole big, there's a database.
Yeah, there's a database, so he's color-coded a little bit, you know, lots of, what's there today, and so that people, you know, that's a good, might be a good resource that could also.
It's great.
Yeah.
We just need to put in the street names for some of the streets.
But it's a good start. So I think it's late, but we, I think what we're going to have to do is have a communications working group meeting. And even if you can't come, that will get your input through the, and also assign, and invite you to, to take a piece of it to the extent that you're able.
What's the first step, though? Is it the video or is it getting the FAQs together? I think that's how we begin, because we do.
Saying the website stuff, at least.
Some of the presentation.
And the presentation materials that we have, say why we're trying to do it. And I think we need to, I think the why we're doing it is really important.
Yes, yes.
And it gets at this core, and I think Peter's point about there is a master plan, and I think going back to that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It says a lot of good things.
I also suggest that there's enough, I think what you outlined is really good, but there's another constituency, store owners and the property owners. And I think we've been pretty, many of the property owners have been participating and active, but I think the store owners also need to be supportive because if people start hearing, oh, I don't know about this, when they're shopping, you know, people, they can be, you know, oh, go vote for town meeting, this will help downtown. That would.
It's hard to get them to participate.
I think you have to go to them.
Now, the library needs to support, yeah, the library staff needs to support store owners, so thinking about how you reach that constituency.
So we have to go to people rather than expect them to come up. Okay. I decided that's.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Of course.
Hi, everybody. So can we, the, the document that you shared, Sarah, is great with the potential areas of focus here. Is that something that we can put on SharePoint and just?
Yeah, absolutely.
Each of us to go in and sign up and maybe make comments and act, and have that be like an asynchronous document? Can we do that?
I think we can if we're not making decisions. So I think if you're signing up for something or you're giving feedback, and I think it's, so, so you can't, what we can't do is if I put down outreach to store owners, you can't say, I just, you know.
Right.
Yeah, so I think in this case, it's a working plan that I'm.
But you could, you could accumulate questions for an FAQ.
Yeah, certainly frequently asked questions, we can all add to that in SharePoint. Yes, for sure. Yeah, we can.
Well, sure, you can propose and answer, and we can all.
You can take a stab, but of course not. I think we can use SharePoint, Peter. I think that's a good suggestion.
Now that I know where it is, I think that would be great.
Excellent. Okay. I'm not going to spend too much more time. I think it's, it's going to be a separate working meeting that we're going to have to hold together, but more to come. We can't forget this part of it, but we're, I think we're in good shape on that. Okay. I think, anything else for Kathy tonight? We should let her go home.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
Thank you.
As always, it's nice to see you.
Discussion.
Yes, thank you.
Sarah, one more question about the, the working group for, and Kathy, you can, you can, you can, you can leave this. I don't think you'll have, anyway, hang out if you'd like, but anyway. The, you know, I forgot what I was going to say. Sorry. I'll remember.
That's okay. We're not going anywhere for a few minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I know what I was going to say, sorry.
Go ahead.
That this, that this timeline that you just proposed is very tight.
Yes. That's why I did it.
And I just want to name that because there's a lot to do, and I think if I read that right, we're trying to do it by November 1st.
Well, I think we, I, I suggest we have a forum to introduce this to people by, you know, the end of October, November 1st, just because also the end of November and into December gets really tough to have things.
Oh, yeah. I, I get that. I, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we're all aware of that.
I 100% agree. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Other things on our agenda, did you want, it's getting to be late. You wanted to just comment on the senior housing, I think. Mark, you talked to Robin.
Yes.
Did that give you a very clear?
Well, so I talked to Robin, and so in our discussions, we talked about, because we have multiple types of definitions, and she's, we discussed that, we agreed that there's really three types of housing that we're talking about. The one is the long-term care, which is defined as things like nursing homes and other type rehab, which is really like a facility, right? A commercial facility, people live there, but they're in a room, they get service. It's not like apartment. So that's like an institutional use. We already drafted a change in the bylaw as a separate article for that. She thought maybe the definition of long-term care may need to be tweaked a little bit, but she thought that that's, that addresses one level. Upper level would be what is just independent senior housing, 55 and older, you know, with at least one person being 55 and older. You allow that at a higher density because it's less impactful. And, and so that's similar to what the bylaw that you, the planning board had worked on a few years ago. You allow certain extra requirements and conditions in order to get the higher density. Sometimes there's a minimum lot sizes, certain districts allowed and not in others. So that is the third thing, and then there's kind of like the middle one, which is assisted living. And a lot of times towns treat that differently in a bylaw. Other times, it can be like in, allowed as an additional use in a age-restricted or a senior housing district, a complex. Usually those are the bigger things where there's hundreds of units of senior housing, and then when they really need to be in assisted living, they move over. So we agreed on that. We will work on specific definitions. I'll use the kind of the bylaw that you worked on for, before for kind of a framework, and we'll move with that. So I've got to look into the assisted living a little bit, see how some other towns have done that.
So my only comment is that we, I'm looking at your email to her, and you asked her really specific questions, and she didn't give you any answers, she didn't give you a written answer, did she? So maybe we can need to take that up with Asha.
I mean, she, she sent me back bylaw from a couple of years ago with a bunch of comments, with a bunch of, that had a lot of comments related to that, but it wasn't just like, you know, this question, this answer, this question.
But I think you asked her the right questions. We need to get written answers from her on this. So I think we're still, I think we have a problem with her. She, I mean, you asked, she should have this. It's a fairly straightforward set of questions. What's the definitions?
So I have a couple of comments. One is long-term care facility, I mean, I guess technically it doesn't matter what you call it, but it's sort of a pejorative term these days.
But we haven't defined, we have that twice in our bylaws.
I know, I realize. And I think Mark was, I think, being clever and saying, and we can include some housing options and call it long-term care facility and use same criteria, right? Because a little underhanded, I think. But, but I have a bigger point to make, which is, there are a couple of misconceptions about senior housing. One is it's got to be big, which it doesn't. The other is it goes into a category, and they aren't. It's a spectrum. You can have assisted living operating within an independent living house, facility, you can bring in home health care, that makes it assisted living. You know, it's not something you can categorize and say, there's going to be this kind and this kind and that. It's not the way it is. And I think we have to get rid of that, putting, trying to put them in buckets, because they aren't buckets anymore. It is, it is a much broader spectrum of housing and services combined in a single.
Sarah, didn't we at the last meeting talk about places to visit that were nearby that were good examples?
I think that's a good idea. I mean, there are assisted, there's an assisted living complex in Salem called the Bertram House, which has 12 units in it, not 80 units. It's in a house.
And wasn't there a place in Wyndham?
There are two places in Wyndham. There's Maples, which is downtown, it's got, it's part of a mansion, it's a townhouse that's attached to it. Then there's Maple Woods, which is a affordable senior community.
I would be happy to go and visit.
I think if we can go see them or get, and get kind of a, you know, a report back on what those actually look like and how they seem to be with zoning. That would be great. And I think in the meantime, Robin, if, to Chris's point, that we need to get rid of all those definitions, we have these five prescriptive definitions. Are they right? Are they, are they helpful or are they not helpful from a zoning?
Well, I think they're, I think the definitions are correct. It's just if you start trying to say you can do this one here but not there, it just gets very messy.
Okay. The next step on that is maybe you'll. The next step on that is maybe you'll look into, you guys look into maybe a visit and then report back on what they look like and how they're zoned. Maybe they predate zoning, maybe they, you know. Okay, great. I think that's, I'm going to pass over the driveways.
Yeah, that's fine.
Please, everybody do read them in any, I'm going to.
Do driveway talk?
Yes, let's not talk about that. And I think we've heard from the public liaison reports, I didn't ask anybody, but I will give you two very quick liaisons. I went to the MAPC regional meeting, MAP, well, the Area Planning Commission, and Ipswich at the Ipswich River Watershed Association. All the other towns are doing similar projects, although, but there, I think the most interesting thing about that meeting was a discussion with their transportation person about some strategies for striping less traveled roads to encourage safer driveways. So example would be Forest Street, and instead of having, putting a white yellow line down the middle, I should have the image, I'm trying to find it while we're, you put dotted lines four feet in on each side. So it forces the cars to drive in the middle and feel that the pedestrians have a significant portion of the road rather than, so I mentioned it to Terry Cowman, who's I think chair of the, and he's I think going to, oh, whatever, he's, are you the chair? No. Anyway, I think he's, I'm going to give him the images and ask him to think about that with the PTW as some attention, finding an experimental place to at least explore it. It's been doing, been done and conquered. The other thing I did is, when, Mark went as well to the group called March, I don't know what that stands for. It's a group that was, Greg Fretschfield is now chairing, to try to coordinate climate resilience planning across the North Shore. And it was an inaugural meeting, there were some interesting conversations about work that the state is doing to identify climate resilience issues across the North Shore. And I think it remains to be seen how that group will actually help us get things done, but it, you know, we've got all these current issues, but this climate resilience issues are certainly important. So I went home and I pulled up the maps for our downtown district. I will put them in the meeting packet, I guess, for next meeting, so of course I took a look at them. And at least I came away saying, okay, the downtown district that we are talking about is on the edge of these climate flooding zones, but on the edge, or just outside of. So that's, I will put those in the, so you can see them. Any other updates people want to give?
I should give you an update on the facilities group.
You want to do that next time, or are you wanting to do it?
No, this will take no time. We're continuing to visit Newburyport was last week, so now it's been Newburyport, Rockford, and Essex, and the current facilities here. And I do think that Chuck views us as a permanent building committee, not so much as a facilities review committee. He's relying on this group to evaluate costs, the feasibility, engineering, blah, 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 site, location, everything. So it's more than just looking at stuff.
All right, well.
So it's going to get bigger.
Okay.
They're getting bigger more.
And we don't have any minutes. Anything else, Mark, for tonight?
No.
All right.
Well, didn't we have, didn't Gail send some minutes around? Weren't there two sets of minutes that came through email? 5:08 and maybe our last meeting? I thought, I did review some, so.
If people are ready to do that, I haven't looked at them because they weren't in the packet. They weren't in the folder, so I'd like to defer personally, unless anybody else. Okay, we'll defer those, but Mark, can you make sure to get in the?
When's the next meeting?
Folder for, and then the next meeting is Tuesday, October 14th, because that is the, October 13th is the second Monday, but it is a holiday. So we'll, we'll meet on October 14th.
And how are we organized to make a communications working?
I think we'll post something, we'll uphold you. Yeah.
Is that me on the base screen? How do I look?
You look awesome.
What are you wearing, Peter?
Tote, yes.
Shorts. All right, I think motion, Peter's making a motion to adjourn.
All right, don't move.
All in favor? All right, Peter, feel better. Thank you for.
All right, thank you, everybody.
All right, bye.